Good evening Central Unified School District community. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's also our annual organizational meeting this December 12th, 2023 at 6:05 PM. We call a meeting to order. Let the record show, all members are present at 6:05 PM. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Correa. We have a second by trustee Solis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We invite the public if they have any comments on any closed session items at this time.
Setting thirty seconds on the clock.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to closed session and reconvene at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
...
Hey! Hey! Yes! Yeah! Yes!
We'll call her up when she comes.
Next, we turn it over to Dr. Boatwright for student recognition.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to actually turn this over to Principal Dave Holtermann.
Thank you, President Singh, members of the board, Superintendent Davis. Our students in our ag program did an amazing job at the fair this year. I'd like to announce those for you and they're going to walk through and shake your hands while I'm announcing that, if that's okay. Our first is Adriana Santos Gill. She was the reserve champion British Breed, champion Fresno County Bread and Fed for Beef. Next is Alex Phillips. Yep, you can, Alex Phillips. Actually, I probably should ask you to wait so I can say this. So Alex Phillips, reserve champion Yorkshire, I'm sorry, reserve champion Dorset. Angie Sanchez, best opposite of breed Lionhead. Ariana Cantu, FFA reserve champion Dairy Replacement, that's Goat. Carly Pittman, reserve champion Dark Cross. Faith Simpson, reserve champion Fresno County Bread and Fed. Giselle Galavies, champion bread and owned champion Valley Bread and Fed. Gracie Mayling, best in show walnuts. Josiah Salazar, best in breed Holland Lop. Jocelyn Levitt was the champion Hampshire, the grand champion FFA and supreme champion for swine. Kaylee Ramos, reserve champion AOB, reserve champion Valley Bread and Fed. Macy Richardson, champion Suffolk, that's sheep. Mason Espinola, champion Dorset. Noah Valdez, champion Light Cross, Noah's a ball, champion, reserve champion Suffolk. Reagan Porter, champion Dirac, best in show citrus. Tyler Diaz, best of breed Minirex Rabbit. And Zayla Clugston was reserve champion Hampshire, champion AOB, and best in show wall mount arrangement. And I want to thank all of them, you can give a clap for them right now. We have June Bettencourt, our teachers. And the teachers who coached them were June Bettencourt, Jessica Fahey, Yessenia Ramirez, and Chris Williams. We appreciate all the work they did.
Thank you so much, Dr. Boatwright and Principal Holtermann. Next, with mixed emotions, we turn it over to Gilbert Maggion for alumni recognition.
Yes, so this is our final honorary of 2023 and I'd like to call up to the podium Central High School class of 2012, Robert Brewer. So I want to read a little blurb from the person who nominated Robert. They say, "Robert has demonstrated tremendous hard work and dedication towards the community in Central Unified. Robert is a graduate of the Central East class of 2012. He worked as a technology assistant at Glacier Point Middle School for five years. He then went on to get his bachelor's and then his master's of English Literature at Fresno State in 2019. Robert then completed his teaching credential through Fresno Pacific University and began teaching at Glacier Point Middle School in 2020. This past school year, he decided to teach English and yearbook at his alma mater, Central East High School. Robert has enthusiasm and passion for the students he teaches. He attempts to foster within them a love of reading and writing that they can carry with them for the rest of their lives. He is quick to accept new opportunities and leadership roles within the school. He is constantly finding ways to engage his students through technology and academic discussion. He is an excellent role model for his students and demonstrates commitment to the district." Thank you, Robert, for your continued service to our community and commitment to our youth. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you so much, Dr. Boatwright and Principal Holtermann.
Next, with mixed emotions, we turn it over to Gilbert Maggion for alumni recognition.
Yes, so this is our final honoree of 2023 and I'd like to call up to the podium Central High School class of 2012, Robert Brewer. So I want to read a little blurb from the person who nominated Robert. They say, "Robert has demonstrated tremendous hard work and dedication towards the community in Central Unified. Robert is a graduate of the Central East class of 2012. He worked as a technology assistant at Glacier Point Middle School for five years. He then went on to get his bachelor's and then his master's of English Literature at Fresno State in 2019. Robert then completed his teaching credential through Fresno Pacific University and began teaching at Glacier Point Middle School in 2020. This past school year, he decided to teach English and yearbook at his alma mater, Central East High School. Robert has enthusiasm and passion for the students he teaches. He attempts to foster within them a love of reading and writing that they can carry with them for the rest of their lives. He is quick to accept new opportunities and leadership roles within the school. He is constantly finding ways to engage his students through technology and academic discussion. He is an excellent role model for his students and demonstrates commitment to the district." Thank you, Robert, for your continued service to our community and commitment to our youth. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you so much. So thank you to the person who nominated me, I'm incredibly grateful. I'm proud of my roots as a Central alumni. I'm just incredibly grateful for the district for providing me such an opportunity. All of my former teachers who I was fortunate enough to run into today, it's just great to see you and just appreciate the impact, you know, from Roosevelt Elementary to El Capitan, Central West, Central East, all the people within them have created an incredible mark on my life and I thank them. The Central family is made up of remarkable individuals who embody true character and who have helped me become the person I am today. I'd like to express my gratitude to the amazing staff at Glacier Point. They were the ones who originally gave me the first job in education as a technology aide back in the tablet days, if you guys remember that. It was through Glacier Point and technology that I was encouraged to earn my teaching credential and become a teacher. Now that I teach at Central East, I leave work every day and I feel like I made a positive impact on the lives of students and I feel like I have an awesome relationship with my ex-. Thank you. I'm proud of my roots as a Central alumni. I'm just incredibly grateful for the district for providing me such an opportunity. All of my former teachers who I was fortunate enough to run into today, it's just great to see you and just appreciate the impact, you know, from Roosevelt Elementary to El Capitan, Central West, Central East, all the people within them have created an incredible mark on my life and I thank them. The Central family is made up of remarkable individuals who embody true character and who have helped me become the person I am today. I'd like to express my gratitude to the amazing staff at Glacier Point. They were the ones who originally gave me the first job in education as a technology aide back in the tablet days, if you guys remember that. It was through Glacier Point and technology that I was encouraged to earn my teaching credential and become a teacher. Now that I teach at Central East, I leave work every day and I feel like I made a positive impact on the lives of students and I feel like I have an awesome relationship with my ex-. Thank you. I'm proud of my roots as a Central alumni. I'm just incredibly grateful for the district for providing me such an opportunity. All of my former teachers who I was fortunate enough to run into today, it's just great to see you and just appreciate the impact, you know, from Roosevelt Elementary to El Capitan, Central West, Central East, all the people within them have created an incredible mark on my life and I thank them. The Central family is made up of remarkable individuals who embody true character and who have helped me become the person I am today. I'd like to express my gratitude to the amazing staff at Glacier Point. They were the ones who originally gave me the first job in education as a technology aide back in the tablet days, if you guys remember that. It was through Glacier Point and technology that I was encouraged to earn my teaching credential and become a teacher. Now that I teach at Central East, I leave work every day and I feel like I made a positive impact on the lives of students and I feel like I have an awesome relationship with my ex-. Thank you. I'm proud of my roots as a Central alumni. I'm just incredibly grateful for the district for providing me such an opportunity. All of my former teachers who I was fortunate enough to run into today, it's just great to see you and just appreciate the impact, you know, from Roosevelt Elementary to El Capitan, Central West, Central East, all the people within them have created an incredible mark on my life and I thank them. The Central family is made up of remarkable individuals who embody true character and who have helped me become the person I am today. I'd like to express my gratitude to the amazing staff at Glacier Point. They were the ones who originally gave me the first job in education as a technology aide back in the tablet days, if you guys remember that. It was through Glacier Point and technology that I was encouraged to earn my teaching credential and become a teacher. Now that I teach at Central East, I leave work every day and I feel like I made a positive impact on the lives of students and I feel like I have an awesome relationship with my ex-.
very well and we are excited to welcome our formal, which is February 3rd. That is it, that's all I have for tonight, so good evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maya. Next, can I invite Elizabeth Pimentel, our student body president for Central Online Homeschool? Elizabeth, are you with us? We'll call her up when she comes. Next, we turn it over to Dr. Boatwright for student recognition.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to actually turn this over to Principal Dave Holtermann.
Thank you, President Singh, members of the board, Superintendent Davis. Our students in our ag program did an amazing job at the fair this year. I'd like to announce those for you and they're going to walk through and shake your hands while I'm announcing that, if that's okay. Our first is Adriana Santos Gill. She was the reserve champion British breed, champion Fresno County bred and fed for beef. Next is Alex Phillips. Yep, you can, Alex Phillips. Actually, I probably should ask you to wait so I can say this. So Alex Phillips, reserve champion Yorkshire, I'm sorry, reserve champion Dorset. Angie Sanchez, opposite, best opposite of breed Lionhead. Ariana Cantu, FFA reserve champion dairy replacement, that's goat. Carly Pittman, reserve champion dark cross. Faith Simpson, reserve champion Fresno County bred and fed. Giselle Galavies, champion bred and owned champion Valley bred and fed. Gracie Mayling, best in show walnuts. Josiah Salazar, best in breed Holland lop. Jocelyn Levitt was the champion Hampshire, the grand champion FFA and supreme champion for swine. Kaylee Ramos, reserve champion AOB, reserve champion Valley bred and fed. Macy Richardson, champion Suffolk, that's sheep. Mason Espinola, champion Dorset. Noah Valdez, champion light cross Noah's a ball, champion, reserve champion Suffolk. Reagan Porter, champion rock, best in show citrus. Tyler Diaz, best of breed mini rex rabbit. And Zayla Clugston was reserve champion Hampshire, champion AOB, and best in show wall mount arrangement. And I want to thank all of them, you can give a clap for them right now. We have June Betancourt, our teachers. And the teachers who coached them were June Betancourt, Jessica Fahey, Yessenia Ramirez, and Chris Williams. We appreciate all the work they did.
Next, with mixed emotions, we turn it over to Gilbert Maggion for alumni recognition.
Yes, so this is our final honoree of 2023 and I'd like to call up to the podium Central High School class of 2012, Robert Brewer. So I want to read a little blurb from the person who nominated Robert. They say, "Robert has demonstrated tremendous hard work and dedication towards the community in Central Unified. Robert is a graduate of the Central East class of 2012. He worked as a technology assistant at Glacier Point Middle School for five years. He then went on to get his bachelor's and then his master's of English literature at Fresno State in 2019. Robert then completed his teaching credential through Fresno Pacific University and began teaching at Glacier Point Middle School in 2020. This past school year, he decided to teach English and yearbook at his alma mater, Central East High School. Robert has enthusiasm and passion for the students he teaches. He attempts to foster within them a love of reading and writing that they can carry with them for the rest of their lives. He is quick to accept new opportunities and leadership roles within the school. He is constantly finding ways to engage his students through technology and academic discussion. He is an excellent role model for his students and demonstrates commitment to the district." Thank you, Robert, for your continued service to our community and commitment to our youth. Let's give him a round of applause.
So thank you to the person who nominated me, I'm incredibly grateful. I'm proud of my roots as a Central alumni. I am just incredibly grateful for the district for providing me such an opportunity. All of my former teachers who I was fortunate enough to run into today, it's just great to see you and just appreciate the impact, you know, from Roosevelt Elementary to El Capitan, Central West, Central East, all the people within them have created an incredible mark on my life and I thank them. The Central family has made, is made up of remarkable individuals who embody true character and who have helped me become the person I am today. I'd like to express my gratitude to the amazing staff at Glacier Point. They were the ones who originally gave me the first job in education as a technology aide back in the tablet days, if you guys remember that. It was through Glacier Point and technology that I was encouraged to earn my teaching credential and become a teacher. Now that I teach at Central East, I leave work every day and I feel like I made a positive impact on the lives of students and I feel like I have an awesome relationship with my excellent coworkers. Thank you, guys. I'm proud to call myself a Grizzly again and to be surrounded with such caring and hardworking educators. I see the students achieve their new goals every day and it gives me purpose in my life and I'm excited to show them that they too can make an impact on their community and the world as alumni. Again, thank you, guys, so much, it's an honor for me.
May I invite Laura Bolton, our Central Unified Teachers Association president?
Okay, so I'm going to open up with my normal comments, the positive things that are going on around our district. Pathway and Pershing had site visitations and were both recommended for Community Day School Model School, which is really awesome. SDC preschool at Roosevelt is opening a third class and should begin taking students in January. Roosevelt is establishing a rally to celebrate students who increase scores in iReady and students are enjoying PBIS rewards and are really adding to the school culture. And then also, our high school special education department, their Unified Sports, were recognized by the Special Olympics, which is a huge deal, so I want to make sure to give them a shout out for that. Contract negotiations continue to move forward. We want to make sure that everyone in the room today is clear on how the bargaining process works every single time the contract is open. Compensation, salary and stipends and health and welfare are automatically open by law. If funding allows, Cuda proposes a salary increase and a change in health benefit premium cost with the district. We also request class size reduction every single year. It is usually one of the first things that's dropped by us because the district always says there is no facility space and it is too expensive and now we can't hire teachers. There is truth in that, but there is never a meaningful offer from the district to address the concern and meet us partway. They have only ever proposed increase to class size for the 12 years I've been on the bargaining team. It was the district proposal to increase TK3 to 26 to one, no more than 28. Though I do give credit where credit is due for the slight reduction in class size at nine through 12 of 36 to one, no more than 38, when Garza opened, and a cap on SDC Kinder to 12 to one. But those were Cuda proposals, not district. We always open bargaining asking for working condition improvements that are meant to better serve our students. This year, they include expanding the opportunity program at elementary from one class to three classes to provide appropriate placement for primary grades, upper grades, and students with very high behavior needs, and opening an additional high school and opportunity class so students who are recommended and meet entry criteria are not turned away due to lack of program space. District continues to say no, but we are closing in on some loose language. We currently have a third grader placed alone at Pathway Elementary and first and second graders placed with fifth and sixth graders in the same classroom at Herna Barstow. Adding an EL newcomer teacher to push into classrooms at secondary sites to support students and the general ed teachers. District says no, we currently have one EL newcomer teacher for the entire district to do this work. They will tell you that we have EL teachers and liaisons to do this work, but newcomers require a higher level of support than EL students with more language and culture acquisition. Adding additional gender balanced teachers. Adding additional gender balanced teachers and/or aides in PE locker rooms to ensure proper supervision. District has been resistant and has whittled their response to a promise to provide adequate staffing, but it isn't clear what that might be. Locker room incidents are on the rise and we are very concerned for student safety. Providing overflow schools with additional full-time equivalent reading lab teachers to meet the needs of overflow students and the students who live within boundaries at those schools. District said no due to teacher shortage and cost. Cuda has dropped this proposal. Class size reduction in high need schools with 90% or more free or reduced lunch at elementary sites. We repropose K33 26 to one, four through six 30 to one. District said no. Facility space, teacher shortage, too much money. Cuda dropped that proposal. Class size reduction, 34 to one at secondary level, seven through 12 in core classes and CTE classes where facilities allow. District said no. Facilities are a problem, teacher shortage, and it's expensive. Cuda continues to push. Staffing, thinkery, reading labs, and math labs with certificated staff, same response. District has said no due to teacher shortage. Cuda has dropped this. Bringing back 504 and SST coordinators at high school so that counselors can focus on meeting with students for their four-year plans, college and career support, and providing counseling services to students in crisis. District said no. Cuda dropped this. So as you can see, we are not just at the bargaining table for the money. We are overwhelmingly coming to the table asking for improved learning conditions for our students, but money is what we are being whittled down to as we draw closer to the end stages of bargaining. With so many no responses, compensation is all we are left with. Thank you.
Angie Agiri will not be joining us today, our president for California School Employees Association. Next, we return, we start with a report from Director of Transportation, Mr. Jesse Boggs.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and board members. Tonight, I'll provide a brief glimpse of some of the work we do over at MOT Department. All right, so who is MOT? Maintenance, operations, and transportation is comprised of four departments. Our maintenance departments, which has 25 employees. Our operations, which is comprised of two departments, custodial with 89, and our grounds with 26. And our transportation, which is our bus drivers and our mechanics at 80. We have four support staff members that support the four departments and we have nine manager supervisors. So a total of 233 staff members in MOT. So this is our work order process for maintenance and operations. This process is for all of our routine repairs for the district. It all starts with the school site submitting a work order in our Facilitron work order system. It is received by our work control manager who prioritizes the urgency based on if that work order affects the student learning environment, anything with life safety or with HVAC. Then, the work control manager assigns it to the appropriate department with communication from the department head and makes sure it gets done. After the work order is done, the MNO staff completes it and it is updated in the work order system, so there's communication provided to whoever entered the work order. During this process, communication for us has been a staple. We are continuing to try to improve our communication to the school sites with the implementation of the work control manager. That position is the point of contact for our three departments under MNO. So the school sites have one person they can go to for anything that regards to anything in the work order system. There is monthly meetings with the work control manager and site admin, so we can go over the work order that are currently in the system for the school site, prioritize them with them, and make sure we are taking care of the needs of the school site. So briefly, I just want to go over some of the work that gets done in the MNO or MOT Department. So this is a recent issue that we had at McKinley Elementary. We had a water leak next to a, next to the cafeteria. It was identified, you can see as it was excavated and then repaired. We had everything done in about, I would say about 12 hours after we knew it happened and a temporary fix in place so that way students can go to school in the morning. And then we finished it up by putting concrete in. This is an interior paint job that the maintenance department did over at Central High School. And this is some of the previous projects that we have completed in the previous years. We did a water bottle fillers indoors by all cafeterias, that was through a grant. And we also did outdoor bottle filling stations last year. This is Howland Kearney where we upgraded the kindergarten playground structure and then we added turf around that playground structure earlier this year. Our operations department, or sorry, my custodial, our custodial department is in charge of not only cleaning our school sites, but also cleaning up after events. This is after one of the football games, as you can see with a lot of our fans, there's a lot of cleanup to do and our team does an amazing job to make sure we're ready to go for the next event, that could be the next morning. They also, our custodial department is also in charge of refinishing our basketball courts and our basketball, our basketball courts at our high schools every year. So this is at Justin Garza High School where they applied wax to our basketball courts. Our grounds department has been really focusing on our fields this year and we, as you know, we did do some field closures to help. I wanted to highlight Kaufman Stadium, which has been a two-year process for us at least that included not only rest, but fertilizer seeding, herbicide. This was taken earlier this year and this is the picture of it probably about two months One of the other big things our grounds department does is every fall, they are in charge of getting our baseball and softball fields ready for winter ball. This process at our high schools is very intricate and takes a lot of time and energy. So as you can see, this is at Central High School. The first step is to mow down the field really low, add sand, level it all out, and then put down a rye grass for the winter. The picture on the right, you can see the rye grass starting to grow. And you can see both the softball and baseball after it has been planted and this was taken about a month ago, or about two weeks ago, sorry. And this is the same thing at Central East. The one thing our department also does is anytime there is any areas that maybe did not take because of, you know, the conditions weren't right in that one area, we'll go back with turf and fill in the, fill in the place, or fill in the spots like you can see in the outfield. Our transportation department, as you can see, is in charge of transporting our students. Currently, we're transporting right around 3,200 students to and from school. We have talked a lot about our buses and our situation and what we can do and so this, I couldn't show you guys us picking up kids, but I could show you where we're at and so we have 101 parking spots and currently have 98 buses. This is right around 6:30 to 6:45 in the morning where you can see buses are turning on and ready to get going for the day. One of the big things that we're doing this year is we are really focusing on upgrading our facilities based on what our sites are needing. So our work control manager, along with the department heads, have been going out, meeting with the site administrators and reviewing their needs. We have been prioritizing based on site needs and what our resources are and have ongoing planning and communication with each site to ensure we are aligned with what they need. Based on these meetings, we have provided a list of where we're currently at. This is just, I would say, a small sample of where we're currently at. The highlighted items are items that have either been board approved at the previous meeting or items that are on the list to be board approved tonight. As you can see, that's about half of them with the rest of the school sites might not need board approval because of the cost, but some of them will be coming back in future meetings for additional approval. Even though the project that we might be working on might not be listed on this list, we do have a master list that will be providing updates throughout the year as we continue to do projects. After that, that's all I got. Happy to answer any questions or comments that the board may have.
Thank you. Trustee Correa.
Thank you so much, that's really helpful. Given the number of teachers and thank you all for being here, I just want to ask, I know you mentioned that there are meetings with site administrators. If our teachers are having any issues in their classroom related to facilities, I know that sometimes there's some lack of oversight or we miss something, how can they go about reporting any issues in the classroom so that they make it on the list and then we can go through and prioritize some of those projects?
Yeah, we, our maintenance department, you know, they're boots on the ground, so are our custodians. So we do hear a lot of the concerns even through back channels just because our custodian might bring concerns to us, but I would always push the teachers and any staff members, bring their concern to site administration. We're really, like I said, we're meeting monthly, we're trying to make sure we keep our resources and priorities aligned with the school sites. And I think we've been doing a better job of it, as you can see, I think one of the things I've heard, I've been here for about 10 years, has been flooring and we've made a huge push on flooring within the last three years to keep pushing and getting as much work as we possibly can get done.
Thank you. One of the other concerns that I've been hearing lately is related to the maintenance of the fields and whether it's actual or perceived inequities and how we're maintaining certain fields. I know that you talked about baseball and softball. Do we have a schedule to ensure that we're also maintaining any soccer fields or any green space that we have available for our students?
Yeah, so all of our district fields have a schedule. Based on the usage of those fields, the schedule might change based on that. We have shared fields at our middle school and elementary levels, so those fields, depending, we'll do the work whatever we can when they're not in use. We really won't take anybody off, like the middle schools, we do have certain fields that we did block off for outside organizations to help try to provide some rest. We have started seeing some signs that we're going to get better grass coming in in the spring, but you know, with that, that's only early and about halfway through that process. We'll really start seeing the growth in those this springtime when our grass starts growing again and everything starts waking back up. We're at the point of time now where watering's turned to a very, very minimal, if not off, and our grass is going dormant.
And I know you mentioned that there is a schedule, is that something that's published and we can see or is that something that is maintained internally?
It's maintained internally. We can do a, we can, what we can do is help provide that information to school sites and then we can see if there's another avenue we can do to provide that information.
Yeah, I mean, I would request if, depending on what resources it would take, whether it's appropriate to include it on facilities, on our Facilitron, just so that our community is also aware. And again, if there is more usage on certain fields, that we prioritize those so that there isn't visually any perceived inequities in maintaining those fields.
Yeah, okay.
And then similar question, you mentioned that the basketball courts were waxed. Is that something also that we're maintaining a schedule so that it's occurring more frequently and we know when that's happening?
Yeah, so it happens once a year. We don't want to, we really don't want to put too much on there because wax will build up, it's not something we take off. So it's done once a year over the summer, but this year, we actually work with our athletic department to see what is, where is the need and so we're actually doing over Christmas break now to make sure the courts are ready for our basketball season.
Okay. I would just request that the next time we have a presentation, if we can just get an update, just to be able to look at the schedule, I know that it's something, and I appreciate all the efforts from your department and that you have established to be more proactive in maintaining our facilities, so thank you.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair. Always a hard act to follow, so, but she touched on most of what I wanted to bring up, but another one I wanted to bring up, because that's an amazing amount of trash at an event. Do we have enough visible trash cans that are out and about? Because I'd like to think we could do a little bit better than that. That looks like a dump, no offense. That's terrible. Are we incentivizing our kids to use the trash and kind of give them a little bit of that pride? This is, this belongs to them.
Yeah, the picture, I will say, is if you look at our stadium, there are stairs, so everything gets pushed after, so it does get blown down. You know, I don't have a, I can't tell you, I know the count of how many trash cans are there, but that's something we can definitely look into, make sure we have adequate. And I know that we've talked to school sites and admin, or I can say the athletic department, about making sure we're pushing that and getting our kids involved in everything.
I know in the elementary and I think in the junior high, there was a group of, or club that went around and actively picked up trash and actively, you know, they showed that civic and school pride and I think it was very infectious. I don't think we have that at the high school levels, or do we? Anyway, just food for thought. I, I'm not being offensive, but I know we can do better than that. Looks, looks like a conveyor belt going down a recycle trash location like at Mid Valley or somebody. Yeah, it's bad, that's a lot of trash.
Yeah, like I said, it is blown in and everything's kind of brought to the middle.
That's still a lot of trash. Yeah, I mean, that's just negligence of not picking something up and put it in the trash after using it. And again, I think we can do better and our community deserves better. That's not on you, I think that's on us. Thank you.
Director Boggs, I had a, just a few questions. One, sort of piggybacking off trustee Correa's. One, sort of piggybacking off of Trustee Correa's. Um, is it only site administrators and custodial staff that generally put in a work order? Or is that something, uh, any staff can do or even, even community or, or family or parent? Like, what would be the process for, for them to raise something to, to your team?
The standard prac- uh, process is to bring it to the site admin. Every site is a little bit different depending on their, um, staffing level and my, people might be out. Uh, but usually it's either the principal or the principal secretary or the custodian that puts in work orders. And most of the time it's three people that do it, so if someone's not there, there's somebody there. There are times where we'll put in work orders if something's brought to our attention. But for that type of concern, if a parent or staff member, community member that might see something wrong, we'd like them to funnel it through the school sites so they're made aware and then we can get made aware.
And, um, you know, and you shared in terms of our eighty-nine sort of custodial staff. Can you share a little bit about, um, not, not exact numbers, but how they're kind of broken per, per site?
Yeah, so I can say on average, every elementary has three custodials. One during the day, two at night. Uh, some of our larger elementaries might have just a half more. Um, our middle schools are going to have roughly between four to five. And our high schools are going to have the most at between seven to ten, seven to ten. And day and night.
Thank you. Um, one thing that sort of has just come to, uh, my attention, if you could just kind of briefly touch upon it. So obviously during the course of a school day, especially restrooms are oftentimes a, a concern, especially for students and even for staff in terms of, uh, just the, the usage. I'll, I, I won't, I won't go into as much depth as, uh, Mr. Cervantes in terms of what may happen. But, but what are sort of standard practices in terms of making sure that we are keeping some level of, you know, hygiene through the course of the day?
Yeah, so at the high school levels where we have the most amount of student populations, we do have about, like I said, about three custodians at least during the day onsite. So there, it is, uh, the expectation that they're checking restrooms and they're working with the admin to make sure they know if any issues are coming up. Uh, we did have an issue, I feel, in, you know, learning, making sure we're catching, uh, any issues. And we did make some corrections on it, I want to say about a year ago. Uh, and I know there's some new regulations coming around, so I know we're addressing that. Or we're looking into making sure we're going to stay on top of that.
Thank you. And my last sort of, uh, comment, I, I really appreciate the schedule and, and to Trustee Correa's point in terms of the, the focus that we're having, especially around flooring. Um, I think more in terms of policy for me is how we can go to a regular, just a regularity of these things, that, that these things are just being cycled per site, per number of years as opposed to just when, just when a work order is there. But, but I, I know that's something you and your team are working on, so we really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next we turn to Superintendent and any board communications.
All right, I've got a few of them for this evening. First off, a couple of things that are going on right now and updates for you. Uh, our schools currently are completing their, uh, local assessments for the winter. So for English, Language Arts and Mathematics, all of our students are, uh, finishing out the window of those I-ready exams. Some of the data that we look at locally to give us an indication of how our students will do in the spring. Uh, our PLCs are charged with working together to develop the, a pencil plan or a plan for which standards students need to be addressing between now and spring. So they're both ready for their spring assessments as well as ready for that next grade level. Uh, we're eager to review the data as well. I know that, uh, we've had a lot of conversation with you and expectation as well about, uh, growth for our students and supports to our schools to make sure that that is happening, whether that's through walkthroughs, professional development or support. So eager for that, uh, mid-year data, uh, which will also include the California Dashboard. Uh, that dashboard that the state takes of last year's data will release later this week to the public. So we'll make sure you're in, informed and have access to that information as well for our district. Um, this week, we also met with our high school principals to review the current state for our juniors and seniors and also talked about freshmen and sophomore towards graduation. Our vision of students graduating ready for success is, is on the horizon and we need to know midsemester how they're doing. Uh, for the first time, we will be hosting a winter school. So during the next, uh, start of next week and after Christmas, there will be seven days of instruction uh, for students who struggled in Math One. We know that is an entry math course at the high school level. We really want them to complete and have strong skills going into second semester. And then also a time for our seniors who need more support in class as well as some remote support, uh, as well so that, uh, we continue those kids across the finish line. You'll see an item this evening regarding a conversation we had last meeting about, uh, the devices that students are in need of at home. Uh, we did have a, a huge increase. Our family outreach liaisons have been connecting incredibly well as our tech aides and, and staff on which students are in need of devices at home. And so, uh, I think we had s- over seven hundred requests between late October and the start of November for home devices. Part of that is because the COVID, uh, devices that were used are now out of date. Uh, but you'll hear tonight some, uh, some progress and, and delivery over winter break so we can be ready for next semester. A couple other quick things, uh, just as we have in past years, our, our support services team, uh, will be advertising, uh, some mental health resources over the winter break. Those three weeks can be very long for students and families. And so, um, free mental health and substance abuse resources will be available. We'll post that on our website, um, and provide out information for how, through Parent Square and social media reminders, how people can, uh, get help should they need it. This week, our grapevine for the winter, the digital release in English, Spanish, Punjabi, uh, will be released digitally on social media and will be mailed to all homes next week. This Saturday, as a reminder, is the fifteenth annual Holiday Joy Food Distribution. Uh, we anticipate helping more than two thousand people. Distribution is at Central East High School Parking Lot from nine to eleven AM and you are welcome to come out and lend a hand. And before we wish everyone a safe holiday season, we want to publicly thank Gilbert Maguon, who has been our PR Communications Lead for us and is going to be moving on to a next step. We're so excited for what you're going to do and so thankful for what you've done for us thus far.
Trustee Correa, or any other, uh, comments from any of the board members?
Two items I just want to share, um, in addition to our Holiday Joy. Uh, Councilmember Miguel Arias is also having a Holiday Food and Toy Giveaway, uh, December sixteenth, so the Saturday, at Tilly Elementary School Parking Lot. And then there is also a second, um, the Central Labor Council is also hosting another food giveaway at the Fresno Convention Center Parking Lot. So if you or you know any of our community members that may be experiencing any food insecurities, please make sure that you share this information, um, or feel free to reach out to me and I'm happy to share that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we invite any comments from the public for items that are not currently on the agenda?
Uh, our first comment is going to be Allison Truckey. On deck will also be Nina Jasper, if you can come into the other side. Thank you, or whichever one's closer. Thanks.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Truckey. I am from the baseball here at Justin Garza High School. First, I want to speak about our baseball field. We have been told so many different dates and timelines, which none have been the truth. November twenty-eighth, another parent was told that the sod was delivered that morning and they were starting on the north end and moving across back soccer fields into the baseball fields. That the school district requires weekly updates from the crews working on a project to ensure completion. Today is December twelfth and no sod has been rolled out onto the baseball fields. Not understanding why it would take that many days to get completed. Every day, there are two to three houses going up across the street and even a stoplight. Also, why on earth was the sod started in the soccer fields? Why wasn't it started on the baseball fields when the season is starting next and soccer is not playing on the fields this year? The field is already two years and one month behind. Then our coach situation. We have also been lied to about the hiring timeline. Now our boys can't practice with their new coach until after they come back to January eighth. The season starts towards the end of January. How does anyone expect that to be enough time for our boys to be ready besides having a new coach to get to know? The lack of preparation is a, is a result of poor leadership. Excuse me. My understanding from Mr. Hightower was wins and losses are not a priority, but the development in healthy young men. I agree. However, a few weeks is not enough time to condition them to compete at the varsity level. We have already lost two boys from the team to other schools because of how long it has taken to get a new coach. I'm not here to try to make threats to anyone, but if my son or any other in, or any other boy is injured because of lack of care and planning, I will seek advice from my lawyer and advise other parents to do the same. Please allow these boys to practice over winter break and please finish the sod. Give them a healthy chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Nina Jasper and if Mark Brown can also come up and be ready, appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nina Jasper, a social science teacher at Central East. I am here today to ask you to consider the union's request for more newcomer support in staff. I'm in my ninth year of teaching, second year here. I'm a resident, I was resident teacher of the year for the UC Davis Teaching Program out of three hundred teachers and consider myself a very strong teacher and proud to be here. However, this year I'm being tested. My third period has thirty-eight freshman students. It was thirty-nine for a few days, back to thirty-eight. Five newcomers and a special ed cluster. I have eight newcomers and fifteen IEPs and 504s across all my classes. While I strive to support all students, focusing on IEP students sometimes leaves newcomers behind. In the moments where my class can see my newcomers near tears due to their frustrations and fears, my other freshmen step up and help with translating and support. I only speak English. I'm working on my Spanish. I am beyond grateful for them, but this should not be my freshman's job. I need para support just like my special ed cluster receives. I urge adding more newcomer resources. Otherwise, the system remains drastically unfair for teachers, newcomers and the other students who have to step up and provide the help that our district should be providing. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Mark Brown and President Laura Bolden is on deck. Thank you.
It is an honor to be with you tonight. My name is Mark Brown. I am an English teacher at Persian Continuation High School, a member of our site leadership team and proud graduate of Central Unified. As I'm sure you're aware, we have four distinct and different programs at my site. Pathway Community Day, Pathway Elementary, Persian Con- Continuation High School and Opportunity. As was mentioned earlier, both Pathway Community Day and Persian Continuation High Schools applied for model schools. We each passed the application process and received visits. We both received recommendations for approval by our respective visiting committees. This puts our programs at the top four percent of Community Day and Continuation High Schools in the state. Let me say that again. This puts our programs at the top four percent of Community Day and Continuation High Schools in the state. Not only does this put a feather in the cap of the Central Unified School District, but it speaks volumes about the level of passion, professionalism and dedication exhibited by our staff. Every day and in every way, we go above and beyond to support our students. If you are unfamiliar with what we do, I invite you to come and see. While I do believe we have a special team, teachers across our district have the same passion, professionalism and dedication and also go above and beyond each and every day for their students as well. I strongly encourage the board to stand with CUDA and show the teachers of Central Unified how much you appreciate our passion, our professionalism and our dedication, as well as our hard work that we do each and every day on behalf of the students of Central Unified. Thank you.
CUDA President Laura Bolden is up next and on deck is Alex Balmano.
I was just going to yield my time, so on to Alex.
Okay, thank you. Ken, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you guys for your time, uh, coming to listen to the teachers. I super appreciate you guys and all you guys do for us. We have massive class sizes. We have students with disabilities, English language learners. We have tremendous amounts of learning loss post-COVID and a lot of a social emotional issues that have come along with COVID as well. And we're outnumbered. We're getting our butts kicked out here. I'm telling you guys, we're trying, we're working hard every day. But I've had a couple of days in the last week, I went home crying, listening to the stories that, uh, that students have passed on to me about their family. I've, uh, gone through support channels and done everything I can to help these students. And, uh, the staff has come together, we're doing our jobs, but you guys have put us in a tough position. And so we're looking for support on class sizes. Um, I want to do my best for every single student, but I've got thirty-eight students in fifty-five minutes. And the math just does not work out for me to give them the time that they need to get the support, to get the learning they need going. So thank you guys so much. I really appreciate you guys, uh, listening and taking all this in. And hopefully we can all come together and keep Central the fantastic school district that it is. I know we all love working here and that's why we're here is because we love this place and we want it to be the best. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Up next is Philip Brongruber and then on deck will be Gregory Taber. Thank you.
I have, I have a feeling that was me, Philip Brunengruber, uh, Central East High School. I've been a teacher here seventeen years. My six children are also Central students. Uh, I wanted to talk a moment about even how much education has changed in my seventeen years. The teachers who've taught more than me know even more than that. Uh, teaching has come a long way and there's a lot on the public school system now that didn't used to be there. Uh, as communities change and, and society changes, more and more falls on our school system. So now I don't just teach curriculum anymore, social science. We now are teaching social and emotional learning every week to students across this district to help them deal with stress and anxiety and depression and bullying and all of the things, social media presence and all those things that they're facing now that many of us didn't face when we were young. Besides that, we, uh, also tragically in this country have to deal with violence in our workplace. Uh, I looked up the labor stats. The, uh, US Department of Labor, uh, has stats that suggest teachers are third for workplace violence. We beat cops, we beat correctional officers. More teachers lose work to injury than only two other professions. Uh, we now teach students what to do if someone shows up and starts shooting at them. Teachers do this. We had an incident at Central East where firecrackers went off in our bathroom and that was as real as it could get without there being bullets. And our campus was littered with backpacks, littered with water bottles. It looked like a war zone and kids climbed fences and ran for their lives. Special education teacher huddled with her Community Day students, her, who couldn't understand that it wasn't real when the all-clear was. And they were sobbing and she held them as they were feared for their lives. And we were at work the next day. And that's just the reality we have right now. And we do that job no problem, but it's more than just the curriculum we learned in our ed programs. We now have installed Narcan and I'm now responsible for reviving a student who overdoses in my classroom. We've added a lot of responsibilities to our public school system. And a lot of that, it falls on all of us, but a lot of it falls on the teachers who are in front of our students every day. Thank you.
Thank you, and Sasha Cooper is on deck.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Greg Taber, a teacher at East and I'm speaking on behalf of the EL Department at East. EL students, particularly newcomers, struggle academically for a variety of reasons. Think about it, the challenges of learning a new language on top of their regular academics, the many exceptions in the English language and the differences in regional dialects are all overwhelming factors that can be extremely frustrating. Imagine having forty-four, forty-four newcomers, one teacher and no in-class support. We lost an aide who was never replaced. The current expectation is for one teacher to support all forty-four students. Many newcomers have more than two Fs in their academic classes. These students need additional support in their classrooms. In our opinion, the things that would most benefit these students would be more aides who speak the languages that need to be spoken. Additional training should be provided for teachers and support. Additional training should be provided for teachers and support staff so that all EL students can effectively participate in classroom activities and comprehend the material being presented. Newcomers have additional needs that need to be addressed. All of us at East Campus want to see these students succeed. Please provide them the support to do so. Thank you.
Sasha Cooper is next, and Ray Miller is on deck. Is Sasha Cooper here? Next up is Ray Miller then.
Hello, everybody. My name's Ray Miller, and I'm a parent of one of the students at your guys' school. I want you to understand that I see on a firsthand basis of what they've done for my student alone and also some of my friends, or my son's friends that are at his school, how they've helped them get through things. But I want you to also understand that they've done a lot of help with my son, who was getting in a lot of trouble last year, and he went to the counselor. Now this year, honestly, he worked with him very good. This year, he's now involved in cross-country, he ran for office, he does morning announcements, he's in the GATE program, he's on the robotics club, he's in music. He is more engaged now than he has ever been at the school. He has been helped by everybody there. We talk to everybody there. They all know us, they talk to us, they communicate with us. They're very well, and they do what they do very good. They have helped us in so many different ways. They keep a constant communication with us. I mean, I know he's done something wrong before he does. So, I mean, that's the communication these people give us. This is the work they do every single day. They help every student that's out there, but they don't have the time to help every student that they can and want to help. The other day, my son had to help one of his buddies in his class because the teacher was unable to get to him that day. The test was the next day. My son met with him. They met, they went over the class project or the history test that they were about to take. He helped them get through it. The teacher just couldn't get to him because she had so many students she had to take care of ahead of him. This is a problem. I mean, we can't expect our students to help do the teachers' work. The teachers need the time, the help, and fewer students so that they can get every single student that they need to get to, because there are a lot out there, especially these days, going through a whole year of being gone. My son struggled, I see it out there. I also see the excitement in the kids' eyes when they see the staff. I'm a soccer coach, I have teams. The counselor came out to one of our games. I kid you not, it sounded like a TV star showing up. The kids were, "Do you see him? Do you see him? He's out there watching our game." They played harder for him, they played a good game, and they all respect the staff that's there. They just need your help to make sure that they get to more students like they got to my son, and not just my son. I want you to know, I work for a different school district. I see what goes on there. I'm a bus driver and helper, so please, help them out the best you can.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Our next comment is Nancy Carlon. Is Nancy Carlon here? Thank you. And on deck is going to be John Lofney.
I was going to yield my time to Ray Miller, but he finished in time.
Exactly, in three minutes, yeah. Okay. Next is John Lofney. On deck is Alex Mejia.
Good evening, school board and administrators. Thank you for this forum that we're having tonight. It's very important to all of us, particularly us teachers that are here to support each other. My name is John Lowny, and I've been a loyal Central Unified employee for 30 years at Madison, and I love my job. I love my students, and I especially love my fellow teachers and our teachers' union. What I'm here for, I'm supporting my union completely and everything that we're here for, but it would be nice to have an early retirement incentive like from the past. I mean, it's just right around the corner for me. An example, at one time, Central Unified offered lifetime health benefits to qualified retirees. It is much more difficult to consider retirement now, and some of us are hanging on for dear life because we know things are going up, and we want to be able to retire before our bodies completely fall apart. Health insurance is skyrocketing, particularly when you have to go to the open market. With Central's large group plan, it could be much more affordable for all of us that are thinking about retiring. This is just a thought for further research and negotiations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Alex Mejia, and on deck will be Jessica Akpovi.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Alex Mejia. I'm a teacher at T. Go Knights! I'm here to talk to you about opportunity classes. Year after year, students with extreme behavior needs are referred for intensive support in our district opportunity programs. Currently, we have three middle school classes, one at each campus, one at Pershing, and one at Herndon Barstow. The program at Pershing is at capacity, and students who are meeting criteria for the program are being turned away. Students for whom there is no space at Pershing are kept at their home site to continue disrupting instruction while their mental health and academic outcomes continue to worsen. 51-50s are on the rise, and police involvement is increasing to intervene with these students. At elementary, the single class is rostered with first through sixth in the same room. This is not a conducive learning environment for young students who are now being exposed to the extreme behavior of fifth and sixth grade students. Each year, elementary students in need of the support are turned away due to the class reaching capacity, which is approximately six students, and due to inappropriate rostering, potential student conflicts, and exposure to new disruptive behavior. CUDA would like to see the program expanded to match what is happening at the middle school level, with one class per feeder school region. We feel we can better serve those students if they are divided by grade span. It is CUDA's belief that early intensive behavior intervention not only improves the learning environment in their individual classrooms and on campus, but also has the potential to prevent disruptive student behavior from escalating in middle school and high school. These students need this early intensive behavior intervention to learn how to control their emotions, predict consequences of their actions, develop empathy skills, learn to be accountable for their choices, and make better decisions for the future. Thank you.
Up next is Jessica Akpovi.
I was going to yield my time.
Okay. Okay, great. And next will be Leon Bueno.
My name is Leon Bueno, and I've been providing support services. Good evening. My name is Leon Bueno, and I've been providing support services as an intervention counselor at Hanfond Tilly Elementary for eight years. Since starting, I have worked with more challenging students year after year. It is a realistic issue that we are faced with, especially with the multiple levels of trauma students endure and exhibit daily at school. Our community is ever-changing, and we do our best to keep up with the growing needs of our students. I work with all of our students, parents, and staff to provide the best quality of safety, education, interventions, and support at our school. My work is meshed with the needs of our students and the appropriate level of support that students need to reach their full potential. There's an extensive list of support services that I provide at our school to ensure that we make a difference in the lives of every student. Regularly, I provide to crises, facilitate conflict resolutions, de-escalate tension among students, help students calm down, and teach them coping skills, facilitate suicide-at-risk assessments, facilitate individual and group counseling, refer students to professional mental health therapists, and community resources. Support students with all levels of mental health conditions, tier one, tier three. Educate students and families, share critical suggestions on what's best for the student, help create safety plans for students, collaborate with therapists, collaborate with, and check in with teachers, and much more. Basically, I'm an on-the-go counselor at my school because of the many needs that we have. I run around to ensure safety for students who run out of class and try to run outside of campus unsupervised. I respond and separate students when I see a potential fight or problem. I also respond to situations when hitting, biting, and punching has occurred, and the students need to be separated and escorted to a safe area. I help students when students need to be talked to or escorted in the office because they are constantly disrupting the classroom and the class has difficulty learning. I'm flexible with parents because of the work schedules. I provide rapid interventions for students who need support immediately with expressing their emotions and feelings in a positive manner. I also provide intensive interventions where I work with students daily because of the major needs that they have. I often work with many students at the same time because of the number of students that need support at any given moment, and there are times when I have to take several students to follow me to respond to another situation. I'm very flexible because the students have many needs. Our teachers and support staff come in early, sometimes don't take their lunch to help students and leave hours after their duty day. We also work at home. We need improvements to our working environment to help students learn more. We need smaller class sizes and more support staff.
Thank you, Mr. Bueno.
We want to be valued for the challenging work that we do daily. I love the work that I do, and I give my best every day.
Thank you, Mr. Bueno.
Because our students matter.
And up on deck will be Melanie Harley.
My time to Mr. Bueno.
Okay. Mr. Bueno wants to come back then? No?
It was probably a different time.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I was done right there.
Thank you. Next is Melanie Harley then, and on deck is Linda Labandera.
Hi, I don't know why I'm so nervous right now. I teach high schoolers like they're feral. I shouldn't be nervous right now. Can you hear me okay? Click it. Now can you hear me? No? Okay, it's not working very well. Okay. My name is Melanie Harley. I teach English at Central High School. I've been there for five years now, and I love it there. I absolutely get the best kids every year. It's absolutely amazing. I'm a Navy veteran, I'm a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a teacher, but I'm much more than just a teacher. I'm a school mom. I have Band-Aids for scrapes, hugs on sad days, food when they're hungry, blankets when they're cold, and an ear when they need someone to listen to them. I'm constantly looking for ways to make content more engaging and more contemporary so our students enjoy their classroom experience. If I only worked and graded and planned and communicated with parents and students during our contracted hours, I would never be able to give timely feedback to students, update grades, or create new content. On average, I'm working at least two hours daily outside of contracted time. Don't even talk to me about lunch. It's not my lunch, it's students' lunch. Why? I love these kids. I love watching them grow academically. I really like teaching at Central, and often tell my students, "You couldn't pay me to leave Central." And I've been offered several positions, and I have not left. We need competitive pay in smaller class sizes so that we can continue to be very selective with the people that we hire and expect only the best. Every time we have a lockdown drill or hear a car backfire, I think, is this the day? Is this the day my own children lose their mother? Because I have a classroom full of kids that need to get home to their moms. I hear that there's a problem accepting the pay raise that CUDA's asking for because there's parent complaints. I myself have had three parent complaints since I've been at Central, and not a single one of those parents has ever come into my classroom to see me teach. I urge them to come see me. Any day, every day, you can come in my classroom. I urge you, board members, I urge you, go into these teachers' classrooms, see what these complaints are, see what they're doing, see everything they're giving up to support these students. I urge you, come to my room any day you want. I urge you to come see what we're doing. You'll see we deserve this raise. Thank you for your time.
Up next is Linda Labandera, and on deck is Scott Donahue.
Good evening, Central community. I'm Linda Labandera, a 31-years-veteran teacher at Steinbeck Elementary. The Steinbeck staff members and I stand in solidarity in support of the Central Unified Teachers Association Negotiations Team. I'm here to share my gratitude for the hard work of our school teams who arrive early each morning to cook, drive buses, open schools, and supervise students on the playground, our classified employees. I am just as grateful for our certified staff who are teaching in crowded classrooms. We fill it with instruction, materials, planning, grading, behaviors, special needs, projects, and more. What do we teach? We teach everything. We greet children in the morning with a smile, spirit fingers, or an elbow bump. We teach basic manners, including please, thank you, and you're welcome. We teach the golden rule of basic respect in our classrooms and community in order to make our world a better place. We teach reading, writing, math, sciences, PE, drama, poetry, band, choir, dance, robotics, science olympiad, GATE, sports, and much more. We serve on committees such as school site council, leadership, English language advisory committees, and parent-teacher clubs. Teachers fundraise for field trips so that our students may have rich, hands-on learning experiences that will last their lifetimes. As you know, California is one of the most expensive states to live in with this astronomical rise in living, including gas, electricity, and commodities. People move to the Central Unified community because of the wonderful programs and talented staff at each of the school sites. Hopefully, we continue attracting and retaining such talented staff, even if there is a teaching shortage. As you are able, it would be nice for you to visit our schools and the classrooms in the communities you serve. Perhaps read a story or play learning games with our children and listen to their stories, their lives. You will find that our sites have some of the most amazing staffs around. Thank you for your time serving and attention to the matter at hand in support of our Central Unified Teachers Association Negotiation Team bargaining for a fair contract in one of the nation's most expensive states to live in, California. Thank you.
There we go. All right, bonsoir. I have three people lined up after me. Apparently, you're giving three minutes to everyone, so I'm only going to need three and a half minutes, so here we go. Bonsoir, mesdames and messieurs. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board members, and all the wonderful teachers that are here tonight. Let's give Central and the teachers and the board a big round of applause for listening to our comments. My name is Scott Donahue, French instructor at Central East High School and Justin Garza High School. I am traveling between two campuses. The last time I spoke was to advocate for a well-deserved raise for our Central Unified administrative and clerical staff. I am glad that the board listened. Today, I advocate for our teachers within the district. I'm not going to stand here tonight and tell you how much inflation has raised because we all have felt the pain at the gas pump and the grocery stores, nor am I going to stand here and go on and on about why teachers deserve what they are requesting at the bargaining table. And I am not going to try and convince you how vastly more challenging it has become to be in the classroom since COVID. Instead, I am going to highlight some of the wonderful day-to-day achievements and activities that are occurring in our schools thanks to our highly qualified and innovative teachers in the classroom. At the junior high level, the English department has been utilizing data to ascertain the needed curriculum to assist seventh and eighth graders in order to catch them up due to the holes that COVID created in student education. An impressive flipping French classes represented the city of Fresno as student ambassadors were recognized this summer at City Hall by Mayor Jerry Dyer. Two weeks later, these six French students traveled to our French sister city of Chateau-Roux France for three weeks, representing Central Unified and our city of Fresno. These students were even interviewed in French by a local French newspaper in France. Spanish classes at Central East decorated the entire campus and held various cultural, musical, and dance activities during lunch to celebrate Spanish Heritage Month. Students have even formed a banda after school to perform at the junior highs and high schools for next year's Spanish Heritage Month. Biology classes at Central East have created a behavioral experiment which involves students creating a maze to ascertain if pill bugs, AKA roly-polies, prefer synthetic or natural sugars using Oreos and fresh fruit. The music department at Central East asked the French class to come and help with the pronunciation of a French Christmas carol. Il est né le divin enfant. A few days later, a combined strings and choral department concert occurred for students, staff, and community members, a truly uplifting experience under the direction of Michael Ogden, our choral instructor at Central East. Central East Folklorico classes last Saturday were invited to perform at Fresno State with their folklorico group, Danzantes de Azatlan, for their winter show. Central East students were lauded for their excellent performance onstage. ROP fashion design students were taught and challenged to make a pair of pants.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
Yes, that's right, pants. This took a week and a half and is an advanced project in Mrs. Cho Han's ROP fashion design course. Students make and get to keep and wear their pants. The social sciences department at Justin Garza High-
You're beginning to enter the social sciences, please, thank you. Okay. Okay, continue, please.
Merci. The social sciences department, I'm almost done. The social sciences department at Justin Garza High have created, get this, a roaring twenties dance party with a guest list of celebrities from the 1920s including Amelia Earhart, Charlie Chaplin, Louis Armstrong, and F. Scott Fitzgerald, among several others whom students meet and interview, all while being dressed in the time period. Students are even taught how to dance one of the more popular dances from the era. These are just a few of the many, many examples of dynamic and innovative ways that are highly effective. Teachers in the classroom who are here today are reaching out to our students daily. Therefore, I implore you to make mindful considerations over the course of the next few weeks and honor the fact that your teachers are working harder than ever during this post-COVID period. Your choices today will affect the future of tomorrow. Merci beaucoup, thank you very much.
Our next comment is for Barbara Bellatini. Okay, she yielded, great. Next would be then Shelley Sanders.
I yield my time to Greg Tabor.
Okay, thank you.
Me again. Uh, hi, Greg Tabor, Central East High School. Speaking on behalf of a number of people who are just a little bit shy, though this was written by one specific person. Central East High School serves exceptional students. Sadly, our students' accomplishments and hard work, Mr. Donahue notwithstanding, goes unrecognized. That we have to defend the success of our students is disheartening. We have several academic teams where students gain transferable skills and have competed locally and at the state level. We have numerous clubs where students feel a sense of belonging and engage in meaningful service. Many of our students started our campus with serious disadvantages, but once they are on our campus, they show significant academic and personal growth. This success is a testament to their work and a reflection of the commitment, culture, and staff on campus, developing relationships with students, motivating and encouraging them, as well as providing equitable access to resources. Just today, I asked my students what they were looking forward to over winter break. A handful said that they would rather be at school than be at home because at school they have a person. They are seen, they are welcomed, they feel cared for. We are committed to each other, we are committed to them. Together, we will continue to find the ways we need to thrive. If you want to know why Central is amazing, look to your right, look to your left, that's why. What we do is a human thing. Please, help us do it. Thank you.
Shelley Sanders, I am the principal secretary at Central Elementary School. I was going to yield my time, but the person who needed it does not need it any longer. I would like to speak to you today as a parent whose students both graduated from Central High School and whose son has chosen to also work for this district. This is an awesome and amazing district. We have time and time again seen students that have graduated from this district choose to come home to make it an even better place. But in order for us to keep bringing those people back, we need to up our game. We need to give them what they need. We need to give them a reason to come home. We need to give these kids a reason to be excited to be students here. And I hear the high school teachers talking about that. At the elementary school level, I see students come in every day so excited to be there, so excited to see their teachers, so excited to be with their friends and see their administrators. But we need to give those people a reason to continue to stay here, a reason to be invested in this district, not just as teachers, but as parents and as students. I urge you to give them that reason to continue to be invested in this area. Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Kristy Oliveras.
Good evening. I am a EL teacher from Glacier Point Middle School. I was originally yielding my time, but he has finished. All I can say is I want to piggyback on what everyone else said, just by, everyone's here after hours when we could be home. We do this on a regular basis with our students, so please take that into consideration. Have a good evening.
Our next comment comes from Ilvira Rubio.
I would yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Then, our next comment comes from Shyla Adams. This is for unscheduled items.
Okay, making sure everyone can hear me. Hello, my name is Shyla Adams, and I'll pretty much just be going over some of the things that happened during the previous meeting that we've had. I'm sorry, the time. Sorry. Okay, there we go. Thank you to our principal who has taken some of our considerations into, you know, into consideration implementing them about having a single lunch while offering more liaisons. And even though that does fix one of our problems, which was safety regarding the school's main issue, also, mental health resources is something that we also need more on campus due to us just having a lack of resources regarding the actual mental health, something that me and a fellow-
Mrs. Adams, can I ask you, just because we're gonna be talking about this topic, would you mind presenting it when we actually do the item?
Okay, would you like me to come back?
Meaning, we're gonna do our lecture, if there are any other board items, but because your, the topic you're talking about is on the agenda, so we, like, just want it, so everyone's talking about that same item together, if that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Well, we'll keep your time.
But we'll totally keep your time, yeah.
Okay, would you like for me to continue or come back?
I'm gonna, I'll call, we'll call you back up.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much.
That is all the in-person public comments I have. I believe we have one online?
Yes, we have one person on the line, a parent, teacher, and community member, Gerdip Shergill, and give me a moment while they send him over.
Uh, yes, hi, yes, hi.
Hi, you have, you're on with the board now. You have three minutes to address the board. If you're listening on YouTube or on your phone, please turn that device down so you don't get any feedback and we can hear you loud and clear. All right, again, three minutes and your time starts now.
Thank you, thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank the board members, the admin, the teachers, the students, the parents, and the community at large. I thank you very much. Central is a school of choice. I'm calling it as a parent. Two of my children, they do attend Central West. I'm also an educator, I've been in the district for over 16 years. I'm also an investor, I have invested a lot in this district. And we do have a huge community, they're moving, they are moving into this district. So, first of all, just want to thank everyone involved. It does take a village to raise a child, so please, let's all, I want to humbly request everyone to please, let's all work together. And my parents, my actually children, Love Deep and Harmon encouraged me, they're like, "Dad, you need to call in, you just need to say thank you to all the teachers." You know, they, they've been in the district from kinder all the way till, you know, till high school. Harmon will be graduating this year, so they said, "Thank you to all the teachers," and then, "Please, please do listen to what the teachers have to say and let's all work together." I also want to say thank you to my ELD teacher, Mr. T., who encouraged me to become a teacher. I also want to request that, on the side note, for the beautification, a lot of our roads are breaking up, especially by Central East, by a lot of our elementary schools. Let's work with the city and the county to make our district look more beautiful. We do need to collaborate on that part for the beautification of our area, west of 99. And then also, I want to, I also want to congratulate the teachers, the students, and the parents, and the admin. Our kids are doing a great job on the I-Ready and please continue working on I-Ready, so just calling it to support the teachers, and we appreciate the teachers. Like I said, it does take a village to raise a child, and bless you all. And also, thank you for offering the Punjabi class. It is being offered at Fresno City and Madera Community as well, so Punjabi is becoming the third language of the Central Valley, so thank you, Central, for all you do. Appreciate you guys. Sarve kala, wahagujika khalsa, wahagujika fate.
That concludes our comments by phone.
I have no other comments, President Singh.
Perfect. Thank you all. So, we next move to our organizational items. Do we want to give a minute to?
Let me just explain to Shyla how it works, if it's an item.
Thank you to all of our staff for joining us this evening. Next, we move on to our organizational items. Our first item is to elect a president of the Board of Trustees. Do I have any nominations?
That's, I'll run that.
Sorry?
I run the election for you.
Oh, my apologies, yes.
No, 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 you're good, you got it started. So, I'll open up for nominations for president of the board.
I've got a question, not a question, it's more of a comment, and what I'd like to see from our next president. It doesn't matter, every one of us is capable, but one thing I would ask for is, I mean, your main job is to facilitate, right? And one of the things that I'm asking for is to be updated, informed, and I need this president to be accessible all the time. We all signed up to be trustees, and you're signing up to be a president, which means this is your job, and I expect you to be on time, and I need you to be ready every single time that there's a meeting. It's, it's unexcusable, this last year, everybody's showing up late. I'm the only one sitting here, and there's a couple other when this thing's ready to, ready to go. I just, that's what I'm asking for, is just your promptness and your accessibility. I am going to nominate trustee Solis because in the last couple of years, I've, I've noticed that's what I was looking for, and I'd like to nominate him. And one other thing, is it possible to, and I don't know if any of the other trustees would, would like to hear this, but if you're going to be nominated and you accept this nomination, could you tell us why you're doing this? I think it's important for me to hear that, because I want to hear what your reason is for wanting to be the president.
So, we have a nomination for trustee Solis. Is there a second? So, by seconding, you're gonna accept the nomination. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate trustee Chan Singh.
Okay. Second for that?
I second that nomination.
Do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Any other nominations? Given the ask of a trustee, would it be viable for trustee Solis, then followed by trustee Singh to speak to it? Is there interest in the board to do that?
I'm in agreement in doing so, but I would just say, keep it brief, under three minutes, preferably one and a half, because we do have other business to do today.
A minute and a half.
Well, as my other trustee said, keeping it brief, that's one thing that I will bring to the board. I believe that the main purpose of our bylaws for the chair is to facilitate and move the agenda. A lot of times, we get stuck, and sometimes it takes a little push to get it started again, as well as, I believe that everyone should have the opportunity to have their say, whether they're a board member, a community member, a student, a staff, it doesn't make any difference that you have the opportunity in one forum or another to speak your say and have it heard by the board. No guarantees what we're gonna do as a board, as we're covered by, restricted by the Brown Act, we can't engage you a lot of times in a board meeting, but it's not because as board members, we don't want to. There's a lot of times, I would love to engage in a conversation with you, and I usually engage with you, not during a board meeting. But I think I would bring consistency, and I would move the agenda as quickly as possible. That's it.
Thank you. I think my, my reason for accepting the nomination is to make sure that everyone feels heard, that we treat everybody with respect and professionalism that they deserve, that, that the role of the president is to facilitate the conversation, but not to drive and push a particular conversation as they individually see fit. And so, it's for these reasons that I want to make sure that I'm always providing an inclusive place, that I'm absolutely accessible, and that, that I always make sure that we are public servants first, and that our job is to serve the public, make sure that we're also being accessible to the larger public, their voices are being heard, and that they know that they'll always get at least an opportunity for, for a person that will listen with empathy, with, with compassion, and help direct them for whatever their needs may be.
All right, so we have two individuals, and so, as we did last year, we'll, we've got a motion and a second for both, and so, Anita, do you have the sheet to do? Okay, if you could do a roll call, and when your name is called, if you would just identify which individual that you would like for president, we'll take the record. Thanks, Anita.
Trustee Carrillo.
Trustee Singh.
Trustee Cervantes.
Trustee Chan.
Trustee Kerfan.
Trustee Singh.
Trustee Maile.
Trustee Solis.
Trustee Sellers.
Trustee Solis.
Trustee Solis.
Trustee Solis.
Trustee Singh.
Trustee Singh.
Vote is four for trustee Singh and three for trustee Solis.
Next, we move on to the election of our vice president for the Board of Trustees. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate trustee Carrillo.
Second.
We have a nomination for trustee Carrillo by, initially by trustee Kerfan, a second by trustee Cervant- We have a nomination for Trustee Corio by, initially by Trustee Kerfan, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Do I have any other nominations for vice president? No, okay. Then, then we'll go ahead and take a, take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Do I have any nominations for the clerk of the Board of Trustees?
I'll nominate Trustee Kerfan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I accept the nomination.
We have a motion by Trustee, uh, Corio, a second by Trustee Cervantes, and acceptance by Trustee Kerfan. Do I have any other nominations? Then with that, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, those in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Do I have a motion to appoint the superintendent, uh, secretary of the Board of Trustees?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Kerfan, a second by, uh, Trustee, uh, Corio. Um, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we establish our regular, uh, board meeting day and place.
Uh, so attached to the list of the meeting dates for the regular scheduled board meetings as we have followed the cadence, as well as proposed, proposed dates, excuse me, for the four work sessions. The bylaw was also attached to this item, you may recall, when we made the move from Central East High School in observance of all the theater programs going on and events for dance there, uh, that, that bylaw was changed to identify that our meetings would be held within the district at an identified location. And so, uh, one of the things we need to do is not only, uh, identify the location or the, excuse me, the dates, but also the location for meetings if possible. Uh, we have, over the last two meetings, had, uh, it here and prior to that in Room Four. One of the questions that was asked, uh, by you all was to gather some input regarding, uh, comparison. I mean, you've all, obviously experienced it as, as well. Uh, in brief, if I can share from our technology team, from our, our staff with Ms. Lopez and, uh, Mr. Maggione and everyone who has to prepare for the event, uh, the, the pros to the district office, Room Four, is that there is more time to allow for setup and breakdown. There is no impact on school events or student programs, convenient parking, easy access. All of the cables for setup can be placed in the ceiling for long, long-term use and electrical power is available all over. Cons relate to regarding technology, the camera feed can become shaky. Uh, we need separate equipment to create that viewing room or the overflow space, uh, which would cause a delay, um, in, just like, uh, somebody at home experiencing it. There is, uh, there was this, a statement about really no separate exit for staff should there be an emergency, all going out the same, uh, same doors. And then the bathrooms are located outside. So, those were some of the cons for Four that were shared by staff. I know you have your own views as well. Uh, speaking about the lecture hall here, it is a new facility. It has a nice overflow viewing space. Uh, the current equipment to supply video and audio works, uh, to that overflow space, good lighting, better display, uh, space with the leveled seating is an advantage. Some of the cons, uh, there's a very small space up here in front and then in the back where tech and communications is. Uh, can be difficult to find multiple entrances. Everybody has to exit from the same space. That was a con and so, also a safety concern. Need to set up cables each time in advance. If you were here between five and five-thirty, everyone's routing and taping and trying to move cables. And it appears there's a hard stop for when we have to be done for clean and preparation for the next day. And so, that may require some logistical planning or adjustments. Uh, no, there's no power up across the top, I guess they shared, so they're bringing it in and, and trying to work to fix that. Uh, and, uh, but there's programs going on here, so there could be an impact to students. So, that was what was provided. I know it's a handful and, and you have, uh, opinion, but to this item, we would love to identify, uh, how you want to advertise or state, uh, the location and then also take action on those dates or recommend adjustments.
Thank you Superintendent Davis, uh, and I appreciate the cons and the pros. Uh, is there a recommendation? I know ultimately we decide, um, but I think for me personally, I have to drive any, any place and I know that it's a lot more work, uh, that staff is having to do in preparing. So, I'd be interested in, in whether they have a recommendation.
So, I asked him before the meeting and I put them on spot. I think for technology and the sound and the overflow, this is the space. I think when you watch them prepare for it and the impact on students, uh, the other location is a better spot because it doesn't impact program or people. But the technology-wise, this is a newer facility. So, uh, sadly, I'm giving you both answers. Uh, there's, there's, um, I think, if I had to choose in our team, I would say the district office because I, it would guarantee no impact on students and it would allow them to set, set up their gear and, and keep it there. I just know it would also come at a cost of, like, that crisp air, the quality of, of video and, and lighting, so.
My other question is for clarification. Um, are you representing that the board bylaw already incorporates or is this, do we need to approve the bylaw?
You approved it, uh, as a board earlier in, let me look at the date, October, when we brought to you the request to move location, uh, excuse me, September twenty-sixth, so just recently this fall. It was adjusted in Board Bylaw ninety-three twenty at the bottom of the first page, second paragraph from the bottom. We did adjust it from reading Central East High School Performing Arts to within district boundaries and at a district property.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would just like to, uh, for the board to keep in mind, security at both the sites suggested is lacking. So, with that, I would like the superintendent to look at security and that's including security for the board as well as people attending the meetings. Uh, usually, we look at security after we have an event. I'd like to preempt that if we can and by looking at it ahead of time.
If I, if I can just interject real quickly, do we typically have security? Have we had security in the past, I think, other than just large events during large events?
We have, and then we have added it over at the district office because of the outdoor traveling, both when we have college classes that are there and, um, for large meetings.
Thank you.
And then I think, if I can add to it, I think there was also, um, just a guidance that we make sure for public meetings like this where we do, uh, we are open completely to the public, that we consider just the room configuration to make sure there's a space for public to be, a space to speak and that it is separate from where you are at the dice.
Trustee Kerfan.
Thank you, President Singh. Um, Superintendent Davis, uh, which, uh, group of students would be impacting if we choose to stay here at Garza? Just the overall student body or specific group?
Yeah, it just, it, it would just reduce what they could use the room for. When we spoke to the principal at that time, it wasn't being used too much in the evenings. Uh, but of course, if we're having a meeting in here, we'll need to set up, so we'll need to stop their student events in the campus mall, uh, in cafeteria and in this space, early in the day and nothing in the evenings. And so, um, I think in our plight to try to, try to avoid, um, the shared space as much as possible, that's why I, I said the district office doesn't have that, that impact. There isn't a specific group that we had to ask right now to move. We wouldn't have given it as a recommendation if we were moving someone out currently. Um, but it does, as you notice, it's ready to go at five o'clock. Their after-school program moves where they are so that we can get this ready and, and this entire space could not be reserved for club or parent events on the nights that we have board meetings. And so, that's a consideration.
I see, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the district office due to the fact that the ease of the staff and the technology there and then also, uh, the lack of conflict with student events.
Second.
If I can ask for a friendly amendment, will you amend your motion to also include approval of the proposed board meeting dates?
Sure.
And will the, the seconder of the motion also accept? Thank you.
So, we, we have a motion for, um, the, the proposed dates at the district office. Uh, we have a motion by Trustee Solis, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Uh, next item number six, designate reserve dates on March twenty-sixth and July ninth, twenty-twenty-four for meetings only as needed and cancel regular board meetings scheduled for November twenty-sixth and December twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
I move to approve the designated reserve dates.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Corio, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we move to appoint a representative, an alternative voting representative to participate in electing persons to the Fresno County Committee on School District Organization for the fall of twenty-twenty-four. And, uh, Superintendent Davis, do you want to share what the recommendation is?
This is for you to identify who you want as your representative and voting member who would go to, uh, the organization meeting this fall. I believe Mr. Solis and Mr. Kerfan have both played, no, Mr. Solis has played in this role, right? Checking, double checking with Anita.
I think Trustee Cervantes.
And Mr. Cervantes is the alternate for the voting representative. So, when we hosted the trustee meeting here in the fall, you were the one who got the envelope to vote. So, we are just looking for, uh, this next round, who would like to be that representative.
Does any, would anyone like to do it?
I'll do it if nobody else does.
Well, I'll be a second then.
So, so we have, uh, Trustee Cervantes as the, as the voting and the, and Trustee Solis as the alternative?
I'll second.
We have, we have a motion by, I think, Trustee Solis sort of initially agreed to it and, and, and Trustee Corio seconded it. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we move to elect a board member to represent the district on the Fresno County Trustee Association Board of Directors.
This is where I got confused. I'm sorry, Trustee Kerfan, you are the, you are our representative currently, uh, for that Board of Director meeting and those meetings are held, uh, more frequently, I believe, than the first meeting, uh, and, uh, the, the third Tuesday in March, June, September, and December.
If any of my colleagues like Marie calendars, this is for you.
Like what?
Marie calendars.
Are you interested in serving again?
If no one else is, I'll, I'll, I'll do it.
Any takers? I'll move to approve Trustee Kerfan.
I'll second. So, we have a motion by Trustee Corio, a second by myself.
And just for discussion purposes, I don't want anyone who's watching to assume that we're unwilling to volunteer to serve, but we all have really busy calendar. So, I appreciate those who have.
We're being differential to each other.
Agreed, thank you.
We're just being differential to each other, but I accept the nomination.
Thank you. Uh, uh, those in approval, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. We move on to our consent agenda, um, which we'd at least like to, uh, share that we are adopting a resolution declaring December twenty-twenty-three as National Blood Donor Month, January twenty-twenty-four as National Enslavement and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and, uh, December as, uh, second as National Special Education Day. And with that, do I have a, a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, a second by Trustee Corio. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Consent agenda passes seven zero. We move on to our action items. Uh, the, uh, first being our student discipline case number twenty-three, twenty-four, oh-oh-three.
If I may, um, President Chan, I'll move to approve both cases or I'll move to accept the recommendations by the Chell Welfare and Attendance Supervisor for both cases.
We have a motion by Trustee Corio.
Second.
We have a second by Trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, next, we move on to item number two, to discuss and provide recommendations on Justin Garza High School. Principal Dillon.
Test. Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Harmon Dillon and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the principal of Justin Garza High School. Um, I'm here to provide an update, uh, regarding Justin Garza tonight. Before I can do that, I kind of wanted to give some background information regarding why we are in the current status that we are at. Um, the first thing I would like to talk about is our enrollment number. So, in the first year that Justin Garza opened in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we were close to a thousand students. Uh, the following school year, we increased by five hundred and we're at fifteen hundred students. This current school year, we are close to twenty-one hundred students here at Justin Garza High School. Something that we've noticed in increase because of the enrollment increase is we did have to transition to an A.B. lunch, um, that, that we, um, implemented this school year and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, I did want to provide some data for you to review. So, on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, when we do have a double lunch, we are serving close to eleven hundred meals a day. Um, and then on Wednesdays, when we do have the single lunch, we're close to eight hundred meals a day. Um, the discrepancy in those numbers is due to the line length. Um, students don't want to wait in line, uh, and take up their lunchtime to wait in line for meals. They'd rather socialize. And so, we recognize that that was one of the main factors in why there was a difference in, um, the lunches being served on Monday, Tuesdays, Thursday, Fridays compared to Wednesdays. Um, something else that I would like to bring up and bring to your attention is our, this, discipline and safety issues that have come about. Um, in November of twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we were close to a hundred and fifteen suspensions up to this point. These are Ed Code forty-eight, nine-hundred violation A. Um, those are physical altercations that happen on our campus related to safety. In the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, from August to November, we were close to a hundred and nine. And I'd like to report that because most of these altercations happen during lunch, um, and we did, were able to split up our student population from August of twenty-twenty-three to now, November of twenty-twenty-three, uh, we're close to fifty-three. So, altercations, which has been a huge decline in our student discipline. Uh, something that we wanted to also bring to your attention is our campus mall capacity is at sixteen hundred. And so, with our student population of twenty-one hundred students, it is nearly impossible to have sixteen hundred students safely in our campus mall. So, how did we get to A.B. lunch, being one of the only high schools here in Central Unified and in the area with an A.B. lunch? Um, in the March of twenty-twenty-three, we had projected numbers of close to what we are now, twenty-one hundred. And so, with those numbers, we were able to identify a huge safety concern with how many students would be out during lunchtime. So, we did take that data to our site and district administration. And so, the proposal of A.B. lunch was also taken to our S.L.T., which is our site leadership team, which is comprised of our department heads. We gathered input in the spring of twenty-twenty-three from our administration and S.L.T. groups. And then we did create a plan to have an A.B. lunch, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays with the caveat of Wednesday having a single lunch for students to participate in enrichment and intervention. Uh, we reviewed that plan and a new lunch schedule was proposed. We recognize that an A.B. lunch has brought some concerns, um, from students, but there are some positives that we do want to highlight. Um, we did see an increase in meals being served to our students, uh, faster distribution of lunch, uh, reduction in student discipline issues that are happening during lunch, which are related to the forty-eight, nine-hundred, um, section A violations. Uh, we did see an increase in safety. We did see an increase in safety with less students per adult supervision. We took our twenty-one hundred student population, and we did divide that in half. So we are supervising roughly a thousand students per lunch compared to twenty-one hundred. We address the ed code of student space with the capacity of the campus mall being below sixteen hundred. So we do have safety in place for our campus mall. An area of improvement that students have voiced to me is they're not able to socialize with their peers during lunch. We recognize that high school is a highly social time for some of our high school students, and we recognize that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, they aren't able to socialize with them. They do only get Wednesday. And then Wednesday being the only day that our academies are open due to safety and supervision. At the last board meeting, students brought up three main concerns, and these were those concerns. Students said that they needed access to teachers and academic support during lunch with only having Wednesday available. They did report that they had social emotional concerns of not having lunch with their peers. And then they also said access to clubs during lunch was an area of concern for them as well. So these were some of the implementation of strategies that we had implemented by hearing some of these concerns. We do have math tutorial. Math tutorial is one of our highest-seeked-out supports for our students, and so we did hire a math tutor who is available in the library during lunchtime for A and B lunch students, as well as Wednesdays. We do offer tutorial after school through Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, and that is till five o'clock. For social emotional activities, we do encourage activities on Wednesdays. We try and encourage structured student activities, and then we also do extended day activities with our after-school program. We are including access to more clubs during lunch. So if a club does have multiple advisors, we do ask that they split up the lunchtime meetings. There has been an increase in the number of clubs offered here at Justin Garza, which is a huge plus. We went from thirty-two clubs being offered last school year to thirty-four being offered this year, and we have robust student enrollment in all clubs. We did also ask for all club advisors to post their public minutes publicly, so students can review those minutes, and those are visible for them. So if they do have questions and concerns, they can go to their club advisor and seek support. We understand that this is a concern that's going to continue to be brought up with our student enrollment, and so these are some of the next steps that we are looking forward to taking. We're going to continue to monitor and review the data regarding our lunch schedule. That includes lunches being served, our suspension data, and student safety. We're going to meet regularly with our learning partner groups to reflect on the data and receive input, parents, students, and staff. We are going to discuss options for next year and how we can do that in a safely and effective way to ensure student safety. We are going to create a plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We understand that students strongly are advocating for a single lunch. So these are some of the recommendations that, and considerations that I have composed to implement a single lunch. We would need to hire an additional five to eight student liaisons to help monitor and support the supervision of over two thousand students within the academies. Currently, staff is busy outside of the academies, and so we need that additional support inside. We need to hire additional cafeteria personnel to make sure that our lunch lines do run smoothly and more effectively. We do need to implement a plan to limit the number of students that are able to participate in the campus mall, because currently our capacity is at sixteen hundred. And with students, currently twenty-one hundred students, it is unsafe for all students to be in the campus mall. We do need to add additional furniture for our students to lounge and socialize on. And then we need to increase camera coverage and staff to monitor indoor buildings, hallways, and stairways if we do open up academies and buildings for students to seek support. Another concern that was brought up at the last board meeting was issues regarding bathroom access, and I would like to report that all restrooms have been effectively open, and we are monitoring those with liaisons and administration to make sure that students are being safe and using them effectively and safely. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then I know we had some public comments with regards to this item.
Okay, our first card I have is from Savpreet Atwal. Yes, and Shaila Adams will be up next. Shaila, sorry.
Hello. Okay. Good evening to board members and everyone else that's watching. I wanted to bring attention to the difficulty that A and B lunch bring to our students and staff here at Justin Garza, and I appreciate Ms. Dillo's presentation tonight, but there are student issues that still need to be addressed and resolved. Student athletes and kids who are absent don't have the same amount of time in class to do well in school and only have one day a week to make up that work that they haven't been for. Extracurriculars are also difficult to join because we have so many clubs here on campus that students do feel safe and are in an environment where they do want to join, but because so many clubs can only host meetings on Wednesdays, it feels like there is no point to join because every meeting goes on a Wednesday. It's also difficult for students and staff to be accessible for meetings on one help and anything else they need to help to support their students. I see my teachers try to do their best to accommodate students, but it's unbelievably difficult when their job is already demanding, and now they're restricted on when they can bring kids in to give them support that they need. Our students and staff, especially teachers, deserve the time and opportunity to have one lunch period rather than having to work before or after school. I understand the concern of an overcrowded school, but keep in mind that the majority of our upperclassmen go off-campus. Students are in meetings or they go to their teachers' classrooms, and not everyone stays in the campus mall. Along with that, the environment at lunch, when everyone gets to be there, is more friendly and fun rather than when our school is split, there's a drastic difference on how the students interact with each other. And thank you for your time and attention, but please take our proposal into your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is Shaila Adams.
There we go. Thank you again. So yes, thank you, Ms. Dillon, for taking our, you know, a lot of our concerns into consideration, and definitely about A and B lunch. But the liaisons are, like I was saying, is kind of the least of one of our, it is a piece of our worries, but also it is a factor of having mental health resources here on campus. I know that me and a fellow student, Dilja, we are part of cultural ambassadors. We are the head of cultural ambassadors, and we have created a thing called Wellness Wednesdays, which are student-led, because a lot of our administration is pushing for us that we are reaching out to the students, that we are reaching out to students who are not talked to. And this was a way of us being that liaison to the students to create an opportunity for everybody to have a safe and under, a safe environment and also knowing the mental health resources that we do have on campus, but also we understand that there are not enough. And as mentioned in the last meeting, that some of those mental health resources, as our G S I intervention specialists, are outside, either it's whether it's in detention or handling those lunch lines. And like I said, I feel that it's imperative that we can acknowledge those things, but we also need to expand on having more programs here on campus, G S I intervention specialists, psychologists, and school therapists as well. And also, when it comes to the staff that we also have here, the staff and administration, we do have a staff and administration who are very eager about making sure that guardians stand for more, which is strive for success, think of others, act responsibly, never give up, and demonstrate leadership. But we also have staff and administration who are not leading up to those things, and it's a hypocrisy to ask the youth to be something that we don't even see here on campus. So it is making sure that we have actual individuals, actual staff and administration, who are not asking students to stand for an alma mater. It is more than just remembering an alma mater. It is more simply than just remembering a district's mission statement. It's more than that, and it's very, it is very biased to sit there and ask students to be something that we do not see exercised in certain classrooms. So I hope that this is a way for everybody to hear our concerns about how our students feel also about the staff and administration that we have here on campus and actually have people who do not have hidden agendas and vendettas towards students, because our education matters more than money. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Ashkneer Kar.
Good eve, good evening, board members. My name is Akshay God, and I am a junior at Justin Garza High School. I wanted to speak about the negative effects of A and B lunch at Garza. Having two lunches takes away multiple opportunities to seek academic assistance. This week, we have finals, and it has been very difficult to get help in all six classes. The deadline for all makeup classes for most of our classes was Wednesday during lunchtime. Many students were unable to bring up all of their grades due to the fact that you can only make it to one class. I hope you guys consider our request of only having one lunch. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Our next comment is Jasmine Carr.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Carr, and I'd like to share how A and B lunch is ineffectual. On Wednesdays, our school is fine, and the population stays the same. And as Ms. Dillon stated in her slides, lunches decrease on Wednesdays due to off-campus, which is totally understandable, hence why all buildings being open and students going off-campus makes the school flow fine. I think if Wednesdays function fine every day, every other day should be able to as well. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you. The last comment I have is from Dilja Singh Raj.
Good evening, board trustees, President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and district administration. My name is Diljot Singh Rai. I'm a junior as well as the head cultural ambassador here at Justin Garza High School. I made a public comment on August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, and then had a meeting with Superintendent Davis and Principal Dillon on September seventh. Following that meeting, I condensed my eight pages of concerns for Garza High into an infographic that I emailed to the board on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Despite all of these efforts, I stand here today. I stand here to represent my fellow peers. I stand here to represent our social emotional health. I stand here to represent the fact that while we can have a single lunch period on Wednesday, our school seemingly can't accommodate that for the rest of the week. We are provided with the useless sweet three sixty to aid our social emotional health, but we are not given the one thing that we've tirelessly advocated for. I regret to inform our very, our first-ever graduating class that they will not experience a single lunch period before they leave. It's disheartening to say that your efforts of advocating for yourself do not matter. We should have listened to the teachers that told us that our voice will not be heard, because the amount of work that went into writing this speech, writing and collecting the concerns to form eight pages, creating an infographic to send to the board members while managing to keep up with our coursework, all seems to be going to waste. Some may say that more meals are provided to students with an A and B lunch schedule, but I would like to emphasize that with a single lunch period, more students go off-campus, and clubs also offer food for students on Wednesdays. Thus, that argument is flawed. Some may say that we have less disciplinary issues due to the current schedule. I'd like to point out that the number is still pretty high for the, for not even being done with the semester yet. Additionally, the argument that our campus mall's maximum capacity of sixteen oh four prevents a single lunch period does not hold while considering the closure of the two gyms during that time. If these arguments were true, how are we able to accommodate having a single lunch on a Wednesday in the first place? Now, I humbly ask you, as the board of the Central Unified School District, to give us our single lunch period for the well-being of our mental health, for the well-being of our academic success, and for the well-being of our first graduating class of two thousand and twenty-four. If nothing comes of this comment, again, I regret to inform all of our students that our voices do not matter. So do the right thing, and let us guardians stand for more. I hold your time in high regard. Thank you.
President Singh, I don't have any other comments at this time.
So we'd open up for discussion from the board. Trustee Corio, and then trustee Sellers.
Thank you. I want to thank the students today and every other meeting that they've attended, as well as the emails that I've received from everyone. I've read those emails. If I haven't responded, I apologize, but I've read, and I've heard your concerns, and I just want to say that sometimes things don't move as quickly as we wish that they would, but we're having this discussion as a board because you've raised those concerns. I'm not sure that you're going to get the result that you're looking for, given the cost and the concerns that have been raised, but I would still encourage you to advocate and keep us aware, because we are listening. I do have some questions. I do struggle with the argument that we're able to only provide a one lunch during Wednesday because of the student count. And I know that students have talked about one more students are leaving on Wednesday. Is our campus not open and allow students to leave on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday?
No, students, students do have off-campus on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays as well.
Okay. And then I know that there was some discussion, but it was not clear to me. On Wednesday, we're opening, we're allowing clubs to meet. We're opening up classrooms for students to meet with teachers. So what enrichment and intervention are we providing during A and B lunches?
So on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, Academy A and B, one and two are open for the first ten minutes for students to go into those classrooms to get intervention, and then for Lunch B, Academy three and five are open for students.
And is that for the same subject matter? I know you talked about providing a math tutor in response to the students' concerns, but are we providing the same subject matter support when we're opening these academies?
No, so students are, or teachers are not grouped by subject matter. In Academy one and, one and two is predominantly math, science, English, and social science, and then we do have some teachers in the portables. And then Academy three is predominantly R C T E and elective classes.
Thank you. I'm also really frustrated by learning about the A and B lunch, because I have a recollection, and at least my understanding, when we talked about moving from the block schedule to the six-period schedule, we were presented with A and B lunch options, and I remember distinctly that the board did not approve those schedules. So I'm a little confused why we weren't having the conversation about the possibility of an A and B lunch and understanding that the capacity of our mall is sixteen oh two, because I don't remember, and I'm sixteen oh four, I don't remember having those conversations. And I know that a lot of the designs and planning were based on plans that were initially designed well before any of us were on the board. I mean, any of our administration was here well over twenty, twenty-five years. But I'm concerned. I'm listening to students. It's frustrating that students weren't included in the initial discussion about A and B and the impact. And there seems to be some good intentions in wanting to provide the A and B lunch on the Wednesday, and with all due respect, I feel like safety and discipline is used as the excuse. I would just like to see an actual plan and the cost associated for us to consider implementing just one lunch. I can't imagine that we're not able to do that if we're already operating and doing that on a Wednesday. And I agree, while every student's safety matters and every adult on our campus matters, the justification of going from a hundred and fifteen incidents to a hundred and nine, why aren't we being more innovative and thinking about providing training or being more inclusive and considering other ideas that would still help potentially reduce safety and discipline? And then at least come back and say, we've tried this, and it doesn't work. The only way is to have an A and B lunch. I don't have the answers, and I know that, I doubt that this board is going to approve simply providing one lunch, given the concerns. But I'd like to see a plan that actually looks at that and that considers student voice and sees them as actual partners, because it doesn't feel like they actually have been considered. Those are all the comments I have.
Sure, if you want to make comment, then trustee Sellers.
I had just asked if I can provide any information, because I think the conversation or the question had come up about what was approved in the past, and I had to go back and look. what was approved in the past and I had to go back and look myself. I know we did bring to you conversations around schedules in the past when we were looking at that eight-switch, which was around our graduation requirement. And we did look at a seven-period day, which had two lunch schedules to it. So I understand the connection that you're making. This was not to add seven periods to the day for students to be taking those seven classes. That would have increased how many units or credits a student would have, which was different than what you had approved. So I understand, as you say it, the connection made because it would have allowed in that discussion for some students to be having lunch or two classes at different times in a seven-period day. This is to not give- there aren't any students that are taking seven periods during that given day. The units or allowable credits for a student does remain the same. And I do appreciate the what- the recommend- or the idea of a plan. I think that's one of the things in my conversation, both with students and with Principal Dillon. Now that they have seen that when it's a very hot day and I can't speak to a very rainy day, a lot more students migrate into the campus mall for comfort. I think the original intention was that it be spread and students be indoor and outdoor. So the capacity wasn't a grave concern because you've got this great outdoor space. So those are some of the things I- just in terms of conversation coming up that I had researched. So I wanted to share those with each of you as well.
Thank you. Trustee Sellers and then trustee Krefan.
Thank you. First off, thank you for coming and speaking. Don't lose hope that you can't bring change. If there's a problem, you know, you have a right to speak up. So again, thank you for having the courage to come do that. My first question is with Garza High School's original design, do we know how many students it was designed for originally, what the rated capacity is?
It's about twenty-five-hundred.
Okay. So as far as the campus, the unfinished portions that are still under construction, I'm trying to figure and visualize how we were going to have twenty-five-hundred students here and only have one lunch. What was the original plan? We didn't intend on having A and B lunches, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I don't think there was ever any plan for that until they got to the point, as you were describing, that they moved to fifteen-hundred students and had concern about moving from one side of campus mall to the other side when large crowds are migrating towards an issue. I- and I don't know, I can't speak to the original conversations in the design of the building. I know I can look at and have asked our facilities team to give us square footage of, you know, what's the interior of the east campus, what's the- that quad area of Central High School? And when you take this campus mall square footage and, as termed on the map, that art garden and outdoor space, there appears to be room for the capacity of its design. It doesn't feel like that, though. We hear that and we see that.
Okay. So in regards to lunch being served, is there something that we are not doing that was part of the original design or original concept? That if we can barely serve the students we have now, how can we serve twenty-five-hundred plus during one lunch period?
I'm smiling at Alyssa right now because she might have more on it, but what I can tell you that I've seen happen between them is they've opened different locations. They've added different plans.
Yes, we serve meals out of the cafeteria. This is on, right? Yeah. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
And then we do reimbursable meals out of one of the snack bars and à la carte out of another snack bar. We do have two carts and we're in the- we just did interviews last week to hire two more positions here at the site to try to do more points of sale. Even if we stay with two lunches or one, it doesn't matter. We still want to capture more kids to feed them for, you know, lunch.
Okay. So it sounds like we might have had a, for lack of better words, a design flaw? And making the best of it and I appreciate that. It's good to hear. The other portion of this is, I was going to ask, as far as kids, space for them to be during lunch. Again, we're going to have twenty-five-hundred-plus students. Where were they supposed to go during the lunch hour? Is it just, again, a bad design?
Sorry, I was trying not to jump on mic. I think we've all had that discussion. I think the layout of it. There are schools in the Midwest and the East Coast that have designs similar and students stay indoors or move around in these spaces. I don't believe in the original architecture or in the discussions that I now am hearing and having conversation that the intention was that the gyms would be used. I think the gyms would be used for athletic events and would stay in good repair as Director Bath was talking about how they keep those up. I don't think those were planned for. I think everyone's trying to say, you know, when you build something, you watch where people walk. And sometimes they don't pick where the cement is. They pick different paths of travel. I think that's a lot of what happened this last year. It's fifteen, sixteen-hundred students was looking to see where they migrate. And if you walk through the buildings, as was mentioned, upstairs, downstairs, access to outside, you know, there were a lot of variables that they're looking at and trying to mitigate and getting feedback on. Leaving those spaces open to the parking lot isn't something that would be advisable or appropriate for administration to do. So trying to figure out where should or would they be, this space is the logical start. I think what's happening is when it's club day, they're all over in all the buildings and all the spaces to kind of help stretch it out. But I can't speak to- there's not something in the plan that says these would be used during these hours and these would be used during those. That's the creative planning in the design that exists.
Okay. I just have a few- a couple more questions. How often do the clubs meet?
So by ASB law, clubs only need to meet once a year to fulfill their requirement. But clubs are encouraged to meet as often as they can and so currently our clubs are meeting mostly once a month.
Okay. Do they have- students have the opportunity, whether or not it's an A-B lunch, to be a part of the clubs and participate or is it only the Wednesdays that everybody's together?
So we took some of the larger club participation and we split those up into the Wednesdays so that students didn't have to pick between the larger clubs. But those clubs that do have multiple advisors, we do have them split up between the A and B lunch, if they are able to.
Okay. Do we provide any other activities or anything for kids to do during lunch?
So currently, we do do Wellness Wednesdays that Shyla talked about. She's- we're going to implement it this semester, this month. We do lunchtime activities and I have a list of those available if you would like to see those.
Yes, please. Yeah. As far as kids getting in trouble, I know I used to be a kid myself and if I didn't have something for do- to do, I would probably end up getting into trouble. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Krefan.
Thank you, President Singh. I have some comments that'll hold till after everyone's asking questions, but just one comment. Thank you to the students who are coming here, not just tonight, but other Board meetings and making your voices heard. Despite what some might say, you do have a voice and you should use it and I think it does make a difference that you're here. And the fact that you're able to do this and do public speaking, you know, as a teenager, which is already terrifying in itself, is impressive and I commend you for it. So on to my questions. How are we defining safety discipline on the previous slide?
So those numbers are based off forty-eight-nine-hundred ed code violations. Those are student safety, so inflicting harm on another student.
Okay. And is there a way we can get like a day-by-day breakdown? I'm curious as to which days are having the most incidents this year?
Yes, I can provide that to you.
Thank you. And then for the previous years that were in the hundreds, was that up until this same date or just throughout the year?
Correct. Those were from August to November.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head if Wednesday is the highest day of conflicts?
Yes, I just actually pulled those numbers and on Wednesdays, we actually have double the amount of incidences than we've had on Monday, Tuesdays, and Fridays.
Thank you. How many math tutors do we have at Justin Garza available for lunch?
Currently, we only have one.
Okay. And let's see, what other channels do students have at Garza to make their concerns heard beyond coming to Board meetings?
Correct. So we do have a principal's roundtable that I meet once a month with and then we do have our ASB elected officials that students have elected. And so we encourage our students to go to them and voice their concerns.
All right. Thank you. And when it comes to where students will go in the extreme heat or the rain, I think back to my time at Central High. Where do those students go when it's raining or if it's extremely hot? It's mostly open area.
Correct. So we are very mindful of what access we give students to because of supervision. So on those days, we do open up the big gym and baby gym if we need to, if we do see a large group of students in our campus mall.
Okay. I think that is all the main questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sellers.
To the student body here, I'd like to just echo what everyone else said. I don't think you're going to get the timeline that you want, but I can let you know that I've been in several meetings where your concerns have been brought up. So I don't want the student body to walk away that we're not listening to what you said and we- a majority of them agree with what you're saying. We're just trying to work out a plan to resolve the issue. So simply because you're not getting it in your timeframe does not mean it's not going to happen. And it may be the way school boards do business. We may not be able to help this kindergartner, but a change we're going to make is going to affect them when they're in second grade or third grade, which doesn't diminish your feelings that you're having because it may not happen while you're here. As well as, I think for administration, they really need to look at the way cafeteria services is dealing out the food. Whether that means we need to utilize more portable ovens to bring them food. I realize it's easier to do it from the actual kitchen, but you may have to do it across on the other side of this big room or have multiple places, assuming we have the power outlet to do that, which then it's a domino effect. We've got to talk to facilities about getting power cords to operate this machinery. That's only going to be a Band-Aid on the problem. But I also would like to ensure the students and the community, there's going to be an upcoming item to this Board that is going to address the number of students at this facility. I really think that is what's going to really fix this problem. And after that, we may, may be able to consider your request. The reality of that is when that comes through, there's going to be some people that are going to be happy about our decision that we make and there's going to be some people that are not going to be happy about it. We recently had a community forum where we had people from the community come in and state their opinions and some of their opinions were similar to yours. They want it now. Okay? And again, the way our school board does the business, we're not real big on the now. Okay? But yes, we're listening. I haven't heard one member of this Board refute what you're saying as a fact. And I haven't heard one member of this Board say to me that they don't want to fix what you're saying is the problem. So take it to heart. What you did by coming to us is going to have an effect. It just may not be the timeline you want.
Just a few comments. I did have an opportunity, as did a number of school board members, to see actually the flow this week. And it's clear that there's a marked difference in terms of what the flow looks like on a Wednesday and what it looks like on the days of the A-B lunch. Still saying that, it definitely sort of looks manageable to me. I think I have really sort of two concerns. I know for me, I actually transferred school districts when I went to high school and actually it was high school- it was in- for me, it was playing basketball at high school is actually how I met all my friends. And so it was sort of like those sort of opportunities, especially to trustee Sellers' point of actually having activities during lunch, which are a key part in terms of your socialization, how you meet folks. I think there is an opportunity as we explore different possibilities and Principal Dillon, you know, said what it would take, for instance, to move to that. But that's something that is really sort of important to me to make sure that all of our students have these opportunities. I guess another thing that I'm really thinking about too is, especially for UC applications, the number of extracurriculars you take has a- it's absolutely a weighted section in terms of getting into UC schools. And so hence why people do join multiple clubs. And so to make sure that we have multiple clubs available for all of our students, that they're not having to pick and choose. And again, for certain collegiate admissions, that is actually one of the one of the things that they actually look at in terms of whether they will accept you or not because it's on a weighted grade- point basis. So these are sort of the things that I'm very much sort of thinking about in terms of why I echo the, like, the students' comments. Appreciate what you guys said. Appreciate you staying here so late and, you know, on a weeknight. And but we hear you. We hear the concerns as well.
I do have a proposed motion and so I have a couple of questions before I make that motion. I'd like to see, and it sounds like it's feasible and would be reasonable, but I'd like to hear what administration has to say and I'm probably going to push back, but you guys already know that. Could we expand the number of days that we're providing a single lunch by next semester? Is that reasonable?
I think we'd have to review it with my administrative team to make sure that there's adequate supervision and we can look into that.
How much time do you think you would need to be able to provide a response?
This is the last week before we go on winter break and so my administrative team will be on winter break and so I can review that in January, maybe with them.
When is our spring break scheduled? It's like March something. Okay. Because what I'd like to propose is, and I'll invite discussion unless there's- or I can make a motion, to hold one lunch Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, beginning March after spring break. And that administration develop a plan to provide a single lunch for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year to be presented to the Board within a reasonable time next semester.
Trustee Krefan.
Thank you. If I may make my comments before your motion. So from what I've seen, because I went on this tour as well, I saw both the A and B schedule and our Wednesday schedule. And yes, there was a marked difference. It's a very hustle-and-bustle type of campus, but even on the Wednesday lunch, I see our teachers, I see admin, and I see our SROs and our liaisons all out there, all alert, watching, interacting with our students. And the students, I saw a lot more smiles on their faces. And the majority of students I've talked to and the majority of students that have spoken up to the Board seem to really favor a one-lunch schedule. And when I hear why, I'm really hearing the two things that I think a lot of us are concerned about, student achievement and mental health. They're saying that our athletes and many students that are behind in their academics are not getting the makeup they need in order- in the additional tutoring from their teachers at lunch. It's only available on Wednesday, when they may need it ahead of a test on Tuesday. And when it comes to the isolation they're feeling, not able to see their friends, this Gen Z is the loneliest generation that we have understanding of. Mental health crises are on the rise and they're saying that this is the thing that they want to feel connected to other students. So while we are a government body and we take long times to discuss things for them, this is the most pressing thing. So I wonder if there's- So I wonder if there's any way that we could make this work, um, as soon as the winter semester. Because I'd be willing to support that. If we have to hire more SROs, I'm, or, I mean, the liaison, sorry, that's what they're asking for. I'd be in favor of that.
I was gonna say, I'm not gonna support hiring.
SSL, not SS- SRO.
Uh, Superintendent Davis wanted to comment.
So you invited a, a comment to your idea, and I, I think what I would love to be considered by this board is. Is you identify what is being looked for and, and allow the staff to determine how to do it. I think it is, uh, as, as we watch staffing and the security spots around the campus. I don't think it's reasonable to have something ready with people in place by the time school returns. I think there are obstacles to that. So I, I do appreciate your, your representation of time. I, I think as much as possible empowering school leadership teams, student groups, student roundtable. Administrative team to get together with what is being asked or expected of, of the board or, or. Or is, is being asked of us, and then give them the opportunity to identify how, how will we accomplish that? It may be Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. It could be fi- if they're staff, it could be five days a week. I, I think allowing them, uh, the responsibility to go back and do that work. I think, um, I think my ask would be just identify if, if what is being asked of this group is that at the high school level. There'd be only one lunch, and then put it upon the group to identify how, how to do that and in what way. I love, I love the creative solution ideas of it, but, but I, I wouldn't want if the solution is actually, uh, could get us further than.
And, and my final comment on this is that the A and B schedule is a Band-Aid that will not last. Because we're at twenty-one students now for a school that is designed for twenty-five hundred students. It's po- we're gonna get just about there potentially next school year. And our neighborhoods are growing, especially in the feeder schools that feed into Garza. We're going to reach over twenty-five hundred, so the A and B lunches, five years from now, are going to be just as crowded as our Wednesday lunch today. So we're gonna have to find creative solutions to address the overcrowding of Garza. But I think we have to solve these solutions sooner rather than later.
Trustee Keria?
So I move to direct administration to develop a plan that provides one lunch for no less than three days a week. Beginning the return after spring break and develop a plan to provide a single lunch for the next academic year.
Point of clarification? Is that, um, to come back with a plan before spring break or to be implemented before the end of spring break?
Well, my motion is to develop a plan and to implement when students return from spring break.
In that case, I'll second that.
So we have a motion by trustee Kerio. We have a second by trustee Kerfan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Those abstaining? So we have, uh, motion passes five-two with, uh, uh, those in, in agreement. Trustee Kerfan Sellers, uh, Kerio Singh and trustee Cervantes. And those, um, in opposition, trustees Solis and trustees Malink. Thank you. Next, we move on to action item number. I'm sorry.
No, I, I, and I should have asked prior to the vote, but the whole Monday, Wednesday, Friday doesn't make sense to me. I think it should be all or nothing. We should come up and implement a plan to do one lunch or two, period. Um, are, are, did you guys just vote to? Are we voting on when the plan comes up that that plan's okay to use? Or what, what, what are, what are you expecting? You're just gonna have, we're gonna have a plan and then no one's gonna review it? Are we gonna review it prior to coming back from spring break? This seems a little hodgepodge. I, 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 I'm not a hundred percent clear on what you guys are expecting or wanting.
So my motion, which was seconded and approved, was that administration develop a plan. And that it be implemented to provide no less than three days a week, beginning the return of spring break for one lunch. And that they develop a plan that provides one lunch beginning next academic year, which would be twenty-four, twenty-five.
So the plan coming after spring break, are we looking at that to review it?
If, if you wanna review it, make a motion. I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I, at this point, I don't really care. The request is the lunch needs to change to meet the needs. We're already providing it on a Wednesday. My recommendation to provide some leeway for administration.
And I agree with that. I'm, I'm okay with the leeway. I really am. I just, I wanna make sure that we're, we're sure where we're going here. Because I, I'd like to see the plan prior to. I might, it might not make any sense at all. And that plan might be good for five days and not Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
We, we will can make sure for an information that the, that the plan returns, like, prior to spring break.
And just for clarification, I said three days to address, uh, Superintendent Davis's concern that maybe the Monday, Wednesday, Friday doesn't work. Maybe it's a matter of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever then site administration determines is appropriate.
Thank you. We move on to item, action item number three, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. Attached is the list of gifts received by the district. Administration is requesting the board to accept the gift to the district. As a follow-up, thank you later to all the donors for their support.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the gifts.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Kerio to accept. We have a second by trustee Kerfan. Those in, uh, favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those in opposition, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven-zero. We move on to item number four, approved nomination of trustee for CSBA delegate assembly. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. We actually have trustee Sellers representing Central Unified as a delegate. Uh, they have notified us that there are additional vacancies, so this is an opportunity if anybody else wants to add in. I believe your term goes until March twenty twenty-five. So we'll take any recommended nominations and make sure they are, uh, submitted and you submit what's needed.
Trustee Kerfan? I have a question. So is this recommending a, a nomination for our region or from our board?
This is from the board, and then it would go to a vote at the delegate assembly.
Yeah.
To be determined. So the, this board would act to suggest a nomination to that.
Are you interested in survey?
I, I could be, yeah. Oh, but I'm, I'm not trying to usurp trustee Sellers. I just wanna make sure.
It would be in addition.
Okay.
I nominate trustee Kerfan.
I second the nomination.
Okay, we have, uh, is, uh, do you accept the nomination?
I do, yes.
Any other, um, nominees? Then, that, then, all those in favor of, uh, trustee Kerfan, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, trustee Kerfan it is, seven-zero.
So, uh, trustee Kerfan, there's some homework to do before the deadlines. There's some documents you're gonna have to pull together. And, uh, we'll have Ms. Liz Pess getting ahold of you to.
Boy, you should've told him before he approved.
No, I, I, no one else offered it up, so I, I.
Item number five, uh, we approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four first interim report. Assistant Superintendent, uh, Iqbal.
Good evening. Oh, okay, okay, see, okay. Okay, got it, got it. Alright. Before we talk about the first interim report, I want to briefly go over the f- formal bu- budget process. Okay, alright. It starts with the annual budget, which is approved before July first. The next one, a budget approval, is the first interim and the second interim. And then finally, with the unredited actual. As you can see, uh, the budget is a living document. With every new version, there's always, uh, new information based on C D E or Fresno County of Ed. Each version is a snapshot in time. So far, the first interim, the snapshot starts from July first to October thirty-first. Any change that's gonna be made in last two weeks will be addressed in the second interim. In addition to the first interim report, the district has to inform the county office and C D E. California Department of Education, what certification is the board approving? Uh, there are three types of certification. The first one is a posi- positive certification. It states that, uh, the district is able to pay their bill for the first year. And the next two years, the year one, year two and year three. And the next one is qualified certification. It means that district is able to pay the bill for the first year and the second year, but not the third one. And the last one is negative certification, which means the district is unable to pay any of their bills for the, this year or the next year. Alright. Before we dive in the numbers, let's look at some of the highlights in the first interim. The district will be submitting, the first interim has positive certification. The district enrollment is at fifteen thousand nine thirty. Average daily attendance is projected at ninety-three percent. Uh, unduplicated pers- people percentage is at seventy-five point sixty-three percent. Uh, state adopted budget updates are eighty-eight point two-two percent COLA for this year. Uh, from last year, it was six point five-six to eight-two-two this year. Uh, two point two-three million interest-free loan for California Energy Commission. That was used to upgrade our lighting throughout the dis- uh, to, throughout the district. Uh, the special education base rate increased from eight-hundred-and-dollar to eight-eighty-seven. Uh, universal access to provide two free meal per day to any student who requests a meal. And finally, uh, one point nine million available fund for kitchen infrastructure upgrades and staff training. And four hundred forty-two thousand for the school best practices funds. This is again, a, a snapshot in time between July first and October thirty-first. So let's look at, at the general fund for unrestricted. The beginning balance is fifty-two point six million. Uh, local control revenue is two hundred eleven million. Other state revenue is, uh, three point one million. Other local revenue is seven forty-two thousand. Contribution is twenty-five million, which goes to the restricted side. And then our expenditure is hundred ninety-four million. That means we end up with forty-eight million. Now, how is that forty-eight million distributed? First, we have assigned and committed board authorized fund, which is sixteen point five million. Board authorized committed fund for facilities, that was six million. Uh, reserve for economic uncertainty is eight point seven million. And then the state required and board approved five percent is seventeen point one million. This slide shows the distribution of the unrestricted expenditure. You have a certificate salary at eighty-two point three million, classified salary at twenty-eight point one million. Employee benefits at forty-seven million, books and supply at eight point three million. Services and other expenditure at sixteen point eight, capital outlay at twelve point seven, and then outgo is minus one point four. Uh, and as you can see, eighty-one percent of our s- budget goes towards salary. And healthcare benefits. This slide shows the distribution of expenditure in the restricted fund. I would like to remind everyone that any expenditure in the restricted fund. Has to meet certain criteria and requirement. So again, we have, uh, the certificate salary at nineteen million, classified salary at nine point six million. Benefits at twenty point four million, books and supply at fifty-eight point eight million. Service and other operating expenditure twenty-four million, capital outlay at nine point five million, and out, other outgo at seven point two million. I, I wanna focus on the number of fifty-eight point eight on books and supplies. That, that fifty-eight point eight million lies in over fifty restricted fund. So we have fifty restricted fund that, that adds up to that fifty-eight point eight million. And in those fifty, over fifty restricted fund, it's under thirteen categories. So the categories are books and supplies, instruction material, computer, food services item. Fuel and oil, ground supplies, medical supply, office supply, tires. Uniform, equipment, telephone equipment and vehicle supplies. Next. Since we are stating that, uh, that the first interim is gonna be a positive certification. It is important to look at the multi-projection because we're also stating that we are able to pay the bills for next out years. So I would like to again, inform the board that this is a snapshot in time. The snapshot starts in July and ends in October thirty-eighth. So with that, um, what, some of the assumption is Central Unified is projecting a flat enrollment and ADA in the multi-projection. That means we don't wanna overshoot our revenues for the next two years. Central Unified also projects steady unduplicated percentage student count. A multi-year COLA increase to three point nine-four and three point two-nine. Uh, we have a slight increase in L C F F. Uh, multi-year includes step and column. Uh, purse gradually increases from twenty-five point three percent to twenty-eight point three in twenty twenty-five. Uh, stars will remain the same at nineteen point one. And then, uh, in one of the things about the multi-projection is we have, uh, the COP, C O P loan. The district is obligated to pay two point eight million every year until twenty thirty, thirty-three. So in the multi-projection, uh, for year one, which is twenty-three, twenty-four, again, we have the beginning balance of fifty-two point six million. Uh, again, the revenues are two hundred eleven million, uh, three point one million, uh, seven hundred forty-two thousand. A contribution is twenty-five million, and then expenditure is hundred ninety-four. And then the ending balance is forty-eight million. Uh, again, the component of ending fund balance are assigned by the board is sixteen point five. Uh, board authorized committed fund for facilities is six million. Reserve for economic uncertainty is eight point seven. And then we have, uh, board reserve five percent, seventeen point one million. For the fiscal year at twenty-four, twenty-five, we have a beginning balance of forty-eight point four million. Uh, again, the L C F F revenue is two hundred thirty million. Other state is three point one. Other local is, uh, seven hundred forty-two thousand. Contribution is twenty-four million. And then expenditure is hundred ninety-seven million. So we have a sixteen million balance. Out of that, again, sixteen million is, uh, committed, authorized by the board. Uh, then, uh, the six million is not gonna be there because we're gonna use it for facilities, uh, this year. And then the reserve for economic uncertainty is twenty-nine million. And then we have non-spendable forty-nine thousand, and then state and board required five percent is fifteen million. And the last year, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, we have a sixteen million, uh, beginning balance. Uh, L C F S is two hundred thirty-eight million. Uh, other state revenue is three point one million. Other local revenue is seven forty-two thousand. Contribution is twenty-eight million, twenty-eight point two million, and then expenditure is a hundred ninety-eight million. The assigned ending balance again is for authorized, board authorized is sixteen point five million. Uh, then we have no facilities for six million. We don't have that fund. Reserve for economic uncertainty is forty-six million. Again, the non-spendable is forty-nine thousand, and then the state and board required reserve is thirteen point five million. To sum up our first interim report, some of the important highlights. First interim financial report. First interim financial report is the period for July one through October thirty-first. Central Infight is currently able to meet all the, its financial obligation with the support of one-time federal fund, state funding, and increase in COLA. District will monitor enrollment and ADA because that's our main source of revenue. Special education and transportation costs continue to increase. And the last one is even though our revenue projection for the next two years has been three percent. Last week, the Fresno County Office of Education informed us that the COLA might drop to one percent. In addition to that, LAO Legislative Analyst Office has informed the state that there is a budget deficit of sixty-eight billion, which will have a negative impact in our schools. As a district, we have to plan and prepare if the COLA drops from three to one percent. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any question.
Trustee Sellers?
Thanks. I'll keep it short. Thank you. Some of the projects that the district has committed to, such as the Well Project, have we received reimbursement from that?
Yes, we have. I can give you the information. I don't have it with me, but I can.
So those numbers are then reflected in this?
No, no. The revenue they got was last year. We already got some, we haven't got the payment for this year yet. So we, some of the Well Project revenue, we got it last year.
Okay. And then the second question is the COVID ESRS money. Do we have that left?
Yes, we have it.
And when does that expire?
We are coming with a plan to use it, so that's, we are working on the plan to use that money.
Do you know the date that we, is the, we have to use it by?
Yes, we have to use the, I don't know all the resources. I don't remember. But I know the one, the biggest one, we have to be used by September thirty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
Trustee Coria?
And just to add to that, a lot of those additional federal funds expire next year, right?
Yes.
I think it's.
But the biggest, I think, SR three or four is one of the biggest ones.
Yeah, one of the larger ones. Thank you for this condensed information and the presentation. It's really helpful. I know that the legislator in the recent budget and legislative bills is going to be recovering some of the COVID funds, even at the state level. Based on the period of time that the interim financial reports are reflecting, we haven't calculated or we haven't received any notice as to how much money we're going to have to send back. I think it was part of LCFF.
Probably be after September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, when we said we haven't used it. So we do have time, and we are planning to use that money. The thing is that when we did the first interim, it's from July to October thirty-eighth. After that, we kind of started planning to see how we want to use the money. So we will use all of it.
And then one of the budget lines, the non-spendable, can you remind me what that is?
That is, we have, what do you call it, the cash, what is it? Yeah, revolving fund. We have twenty-three thousand in it, and then we have cash in store. And then I think we have also the food services value in it, too. So that together is the forty-nine thousand.
And you may or may not have this handy or know this off the top of your head. I know that our board has a higher reserve than what the state requires. How much is that five percent equate to in operational expenses? So in the event, how long could we operate based on salaries and expenses and everything else in between on the five percent?
Well, I think our salary every month is nine million. So so that's, I mean, the first thing we have to pay is the salary. So we can stop the bill, but we still have to pay the, so I think that nine million is the, so given that we have, the reserve is, what is it? Seventeen million, so we have like two months of salary we can pay.
And then you mentioned, and I've heard a lot about the decrease in the COLA. Remind me again, though, because I think I just didn't catch this. Is that already reflected in this first interim?
Yeah, it is reflected. The reason is when we did it, we had the three point two and three point four. But the county just reminded us last week that, hey, be careful because it will drop to one percent. So maybe when we go back to the governor's budget in January, we will get more information, and that's going to get updated in the second interim.
Clarification, you said yes, but it is, the drop to one is not included. It is based on three point two-two.
Drop one is not included yet.
Right, okay. Yeah, and that's what I want to clarify. It includes the, right, the higher COLA doesn't reflect the proposed decrease, which may even be impacted more significantly based on the deficit that we're experiencing.
Because those information just came out two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cervantes and then Trustee Solis.
Thank you, Board Chair. I'm not sure if this is the right time for this question, but any of these numbers include Shields and Brawley and the improvements at Central High School?
No, we haven't, we haven't planned for Shields and Brawley yet, no.
And the COLA being dropped from the existing down to one percent, what do you think is causing that?
Well, I mean, is the state, if the state doesn't get the deficit, you know, if the deficit's budgeted by sixty-eight million.
So since we're playing catch-up
Yep.
for money that we've dolled out.
Yes, and not only that, I think the eight percent they have this year is a kind of an artificial number because even, usually when you have your COLA, it should go gradually. It should go from eight, six, five, four. You just don't go from eight to three. I mean, if you look at, you know, other last ten years, it gradually either goes up or gradually goes down. It doesn't drop. So it kind of says that eight percent was a, I shouldn't say, was a makeup number.
Inflated. Thank you. I agree.
How is the state deficit going to impact your projections in the coming budget? As well as are there any plans that they're going to release us from the state's requirement to have certain programs in the district without actually giving us the money?
I think for now, we have to wait until January when we go to the governor's budget to get more information because this is just, we just heard it last week about this. So maybe when we go to the governor's budget, we get more information than we can kind of plan how we want to, you know, present it to second interim.
And as far as you know, with the information you have, the current deficit is set right now at what?
Sixty-eight billion. But again, that's, we'll find out more because this just came up last week.
Trustee Coria?
One other comment. So I also am aware that at least during the pandemic, and maybe this is already reflected in this first interim, the calculation for ADA or maybe LCFF was revised, and we're going back to the regular rules.
Right.
Which means that we're going to start receiving less money based on the impact and the absenteeism.
And one thing you want to see is if you look at one of my pages, it says that unduplicated count is at seventy-six percent. I'm trying to find the page here.
Page number four?
Yeah, seventy-five percent. So that's a running average. So that was the average they used for last three years. So maybe, maybe when we do the next year, it might go up because it's a moving average, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the time as well.
Second.
We have a motion to extend time by trustee Cervantes and one by, and a second by trustee Coria. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven-zero. Sorry, Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball. Assistant, I have a question or two. Yeah, you want to, yeah, more than welcome to say here. Two sort of quick questions. One is, in terms of the multi-year projection assumptions, when in your summary sheet, you wrote that we are projecting a flat enrollment and ADA. Is that just sort of standard procedure that we, like, I mean, obviously, we can visually see the growth, but.
You don't want to overshoot your revenues because if those revenues don't pan out, then you have to adjust your expenditure. So if the revenue comes in, then it's easy to use. But if the revenue is not there and you're all kind of saying, oh, yeah, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. And then when that year comes, we don't get it, then we have to adjust. So, I mean, that's a safe bet. And with one percent, if COLA drops to one percent, that's going to kind of help us kind of stating that, hey, revenue is flat.
Thank you. And just, I was going to ask for the benefit of our board and our public. I'm very excited that we were able to procure almost half a million dollars for their school food best practice funds, which is a great program in terms of making sure that we're getting more California produce and locally grown things. Just to those of you guys on your team for applying for that.
Even though it's not in the general fund, but it's good money.
Agreed, agreed. Do I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve the first interim.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Coria, second by trustee Kefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. We move on to item number six, approve twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Development Impact Fee Annual Report. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
So admin is asking the board to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Development Impact Fee Annual Fee. But I just want to make one comment, that the development fee that the district collects is set by the state allocation board. We are legally allowed to collect four dollars seventy-nine cents per square feet for residential building, even though to build this school, it costs about nine dollars eleven cents a square feet. The staff is asking for approval.
Questions or comments from the board?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Coria, second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven-zero. We move on to approve new devices for school-to-home program. Mr. Martinez?
I'm going to do it on his behalf.
Thank you.
All right. Staff is requesting the board to approve the new devices for school-to-home program. There is about thousand Chromebook that has been ordered. The devices expect to receive between December twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth. And then we're going to set up the Chromebooks and give, deliver it to the school by the first week of January twenty-twenty-four.
Questions or comments on that? Trustee Coria?
I just want to add a couple of points since Superintendent Davis is not here. This item is coming to us as action and not information first, given the sense of urgency in making sure that we get the devices before they want to break and that they're ready when students return. This is also to address the gap in how many items need to be replaced and students still need. So I'm excited and thank you to our administration for being proactive and diligent in bringing this item back to the board. If there are no other comments from anyone, I'll make a motion. I'll withdraw.
So these are, this, we're going to use T-Mobile. Are we using Verizon on our other units?
No, we, this, I think this is, we, yeah, we have never used, I don't think we have used Verizon. This is the first time we're using T-Mobile.
That was my only question.
They come with Wi-Fi, not Wi-Fi, the internet in the Chromebooks. So you don't have to have like a Wi-Fi or Mi-Fi on the side, so.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair. Will this meet the entire need of our shortfall of devices? Because I'm understanding there's quite a few students without these devices.
Currently, we need five hundred sixty-eight. And, let's see.
You're getting a thousand?
And we ordered a thousand. So we need five hundred sixty-eight, and then I think the priority is going to be to foster kids, migrant, newcomer, and family in transition. That'd be the priority. That's what we're going to focus on.
So again, my question, we will meet our needs by a hundred percent?
Hopefully, yeah. Unless we have more applications, which, you know, which is out beyond our control. We are just going by the applications we get.
He's ordered double for the purpose of, we don't know what we don't know right now. And our outreach liaisons are doing a really good job of making the connection to families who need them. They are hopeful that it is, you know, first semester, all the students that do need it. This gives us a much healthier pad, and we're clear that we need to make sure we have an inventory on deck.
Hopeful sounds optimistic. I'm not so confident with hopeful, to be perfectly honest. I want to make sure that our students are, their needs are being met. And if there's more money that needs to be allocated or a bigger order that needs to be placed, I would like to suggest that we do that. We need a fix, not a Band-Aid. And so with that being said, I mean, this is critical to our students, and these monies belong to the, so. Yeah, I, I'm just, yeah, again, I don't want to be hopeful, and I don't mean to sound critical of the staff. I want to make sure that we have everything that we need for the students.
Trustee Sellers and trustee Kefan?
Clarification, that these are being funded using the, some of the COVID monies?
Yes, yes.
Is there a urgency in purchasing these, this order, other than having it by December or by the end of?
I think because we had the, you know, five hundred sixty-eight application we wanted to kind of address. So we ordered it, you know, so we should get it in the end of December and then kind of we will use staff to get it set up and get it done by first week of.
So based on our current numbers now, we're going to have enough to cover it?
We have a current demand of five hundred sixty-eight, and we are ordering a thousand.
If we come up short.
We can order it again. We will order it immediately. By second week of January, we should know what's happening, and we can order it again.
Okay. And is that a better route to go than over-ordering and having excess devices that we don't use?
Well, we have, we over-ordered by three to four hundred. So we should have enough time to, if we need to order more, we can again order a thousand.
Thank you.
Trustee Kefan?
Thank you, President Singh. I really appreciate trustee Cervantes' comment. Took that out of my mouth. But I do want to just get more clarification on the hopeful part. Do we anticipate getting an additional like four hundred fifty requests in the next couple of months for Chromebooks?
It depends on how the information is communicated to the parents, the students, so that they can, we can get it back. But if it comes fast, and we should be able to address them. Because right now, we ordered it, and we should get it by next, in two weeks. And as soon as we address the five hundred sixty-eight, and we see that we need more, we can immediately address again.
And we'd have to, that'd have to come from board approval as well, right?
Yes.
How much, and you said we're paying for this through our COVID funds?
ESRS fund, yeah.
How much leftover COVID money do we have?
I probably have to look at that, and I'll come back to you.
Okay, because like I think trustee Sellers alluded to, why not just buy more? If double is still the hopeful, why not get fifteen hundred?
I wanted to clarify, that was not my intent. I was saying.
I apologize, I apologize.
I would rather not spend those monies on something that's going to sit in a closet or a storage unit and not be used.
And if I, and if I can add, I mean, we have to remember that technology goes obsolete pretty quickly. So I understand administrations and our staff's willingness to be able to order these additional devices. But I think the other part of this is based on our actions of hiring those additional community liaisons, our systems are being improved, and they're targeting those students in most need and making sure that they have the ability to request these devices. I am hopeful that this will be enough, but I anticipate that we'll have another request just because there's also been a gap in how many of those families are actually returning devices, having them checked, or using these old devices that our staff is now being able to address.
If I can just add, I think the direction that the IT team has been given, and we've heard clearly, is we need to make sure we have an inventory, but we don't want to have so many that, to your point, that money is just sitting in unused. And so there is an element of hope that these, the outreach of fall reached the majority of individuals. an element of, of hope that these, the outreach of fall reached the majority of, of individuals that needed it. We don't typically have a huge change in enrollment from fall to spring. But they are acting on it quickly, and, and that's why you're seeing it as, as an action item tonight. There's a second layer to that. As you mentioned, COVID has funded these devices. And so our next step is, we have to look at what does sustainability look like? Because these will also age out. And the funds that are being used to support those, we have to then evaluate what does the home to school program look like moving forward. We have to make sure it's sustainable in, in use, and that the curriculum we're getting is, is allowing for options for how students access it.
Great, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, second by trustee Kerfan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero with trustee Cervantes absent. We move on to item number eight, approve San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Zero Emissions School Bus Replacement Grant for purchase of seven school buses. Director Bott.
Good evening, board members, once again. This item returns from the previous board meeting. This item is for the district to purchase seven electric school buses through a grant with San Joaquin Valley Air, Air Pollution Control District. Administration is recommending the board approve this item after I answer any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, second, I heard first, by trustee Kerfan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And those abstaining. Motion carries five, one, with a nay from trustee mailing and trustee Cervantes absent. We move on to item number nine, approve Central East High School Energy Services Contract Additional Works. Director Bott.
Good evening, once again. This item, previously, the board had approved energy projects at Central East High School on October 26, 2021. This project replaced two chillers and unit ventilators in all classrooms at Central East High School. During this construction process, it was, it was noted that additional work was needed to be completed. During the installation of the new units, it was observed existing components were past their useful lives, useful lifespan and should be replaced. The existing components are in classrooms and the equipment yard, and staff is recommending this work be completed during winter break. The items that need to be replaced are three-way valves at the equipment yard. This controls the water flow from the chillers to the school site. Replacing control valves in the classroom, 78 of them. Previous units have already been replaced during this process already by the maintenance department. A differential pressure switch, this will help the pump operate more efficiently. And additional EMS programming that was caused with additional work done, and this additional work that needs to get done. Administration is recommend, or the, the additional work will cost $312,692. This increase will be funded through the ESER fund. Administration is recommending that the board approve this addition after I answer any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Corio. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. We move on to item number nine, approve purchase of roof repair material using CMAS. Director Bott. That's, that was, that's the one we are, we're on. Oh, my apologies.
Good evening. On November 13, 2023, the district published an invitation, oops, invitation for bids for roof repairs at various sites, project number 2324-1401. Bids were being sought to provide labor to repair roofs at Soren Elementary, Steinbach Elementary, and Central East High, Central East High School and Glacier Point Middle School. As of January 1, 2024, there will be an increase of 10% to the added material. On June 28, the board approved the use of piggyback bids in order to obtain competitive pricing and comply with Public Contract Code 2011. The roof material will be purchased directly through the Garland Company using a CMAS contract. Staff is recommending the approval of this item tonight in order to save on the increase of the materials. The total cost of the roof materials will be $613,017.19, and this will be funded through the ESER funds. Administration is recommending this board approve this purch, approve the purchase of the roof material after I answer any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
So this is spot roofing? We're fixing only certain areas of the campus? Or are we doing the whole campuses?
This one, we are fixing certain areas of the campus.
Okay. We have a motion by trustee Corio, second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. We move on to item number 11, approve project 2324-1401 Roof Repairs Project at Various Sites. Director Bott.
All right, good evening, one more time. So this item, similar to the previous one, is for the project for the bid, for the labor for this bid. We were able to purchase the material separately and then bid out the labor, saving the district sometimes buying the material directly through the manufacturer. Bids were open on November 30, 2023, at 2:01 PM. The bid summary sheet was attached, and the lowest responsive bidder was Nations Roofing with a bid of $653,908. Soren Elementary was bid at $245,177. Steinbach Elementary was bid at $239,577. Central East High School was $151,177. And Glacier Point Middle School was $7,377. Total cost of the roofing project will be $653,908, funded through ESER. Administration is recommending the board approve this project after I answer any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Cervantes?
I, I just have a comment in regards to what a significant difference in, in bid. Makes me a little bit nervous, to be perfectly honest. Fresno Roofing has been around a long time. Do we have any references on, on, on the winning?
Yes, Nations Roofing, I have Zach from Garland Company also here. They've done work at multiple school districts in the valley. They come with good references. When the price came in, we were also quite surprised. I personally have contracted with Fresno Roofing previously. Wasn't sure of how they, what happened there, why it was so much higher. But they did bid it, and that was their number they came back with.
Don't misunderstand, misunderstand me. I'm very grateful for the cost savings. But anyway, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Trustee Corio?
I just want us to be very critical, and hopefully we don't see any change orders as a result of such a low bid. Because I know sometimes, no offense to any construction companies, but I've seen that happen before.
Yeah. We did the job block. We were really thorough about what needs to get done. Any additional work, we actually did capture. We had to make a change even to, during the bid walk, because we noticed there was some additional work that needed to get done. You know, my team, as, as also the manufacturer, will be part of this to make sure that we are staying within and tied to the budget.
Thank you.
Trustee Sellers?
This company, are they a local company?
Yeah, Nations Roofing, they're local.
In Fresno or just the Central Valley?
They do more, they do more work around the Central Valley, but they're local. Okay. Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. We move, we move on to our information items. Item number one, receive information regarding revised board policies. Dr. Boatwright?
Thank you. So I actually have three of the eight board policies and bylaws here for you tonight. So I'll go ahead and get started first, and then I'll hand this over. So the first one that I have is Board Policy 0430, which is the Comprehensive Local Plan for Special Education. And this basically reflects the new law that requires the state superintendent of public instruction to make publicly available the special education funding that each local educational agency receives. Okay? And then the second one that I have is Board Policy 5148.3. This is the Preschool Early Childhood Education Board Policy. This is also updated to reflect new laws. It revises and updates requirements for the California State Preschool Program, including requirements related to our dual language learners, our children with exceptional needs, and then also our enrollment data collection and reporting. And so this information is provided to the state on a yearly basis. And then the third board policy that I have tonight is 6146.1. This is for high school graduation requirements. This policy is also updated to reflect new laws. It expands and strengthens the exemptions from grad requirements for our students that are from highly mobile populations. It includes a requirement for districts to annually report to CDE regarding the number of students who, for the prior school year, graduated with an exemption from the district established graduation requirements. And so I'm happy to answer any questions on those. And then I will hand it over.
I've got five attached there, so I'll jump in. From our office, the first three are related to communications. 1100 is communication with the public. There were some clarifications on what are allowable or not allowable mass mailing language that was put in, and a few references that were deleted, that had been repealed. That's on the communication with the public. 1112, media relations, clarifies and is, is quite clear. You'll see a couple sections on crisis communication plan to include your IT staff, to be in advance or proactive with key messages in working with media should there be emergencies, and requiring media to register before coming on campus, which is a practice, but making sure it's identified in the board policy would be, or bylaws, excuse me, would be really helpful. And then also, you'll see some language in there about the release of information for students, should their parents allow their pictures to be used in, in media. 1113, district and school websites, there is some new law. And this relates, as you'll see in the notations for it, more for businesses that have online services that we may contract with, that they utilize or follow all of the safe guidelines for students online. Last two are board bylaw, or board bylaw 9148, policy, excuse me, called attorney. And essentially, there is a philosophical paragraph that a board may need to have access to legal representation, and that you, as a board, are not required to initiate an RFP process, request for proposals, but that you may to advertise and solicit different proposals, which is the practice we do, and that whichever attorney is used, be able to practice law in California. Seems very logical. It is now language within the recommended policy. The last one is 9322, regarding agenda and meeting materials. And so there's some language about moving material or clustering it with light content, some new law related to resolving any accommodation issues that may exist for a student with this, or, excuse me, an individual with a disability. And then some language about should information be available in a short timeframe, how to go about making sure that the public has access to that information, and what the criteria would be to make sure we do that for, for folks. And I glossed over them, but as you notice in it, the, just as a reminder, if it's green language, it means we already had it, it's just been moved to another area. Red would be the new changes.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Corio?
Thank you. I have two quick questions. With the graduation requirements, I know that there was also some revisions, two revisions. One of them to the seal of biliteracy, and that may be covered in a different board policy, and I'm wondering when that'll come forward. And then secondly, does, and I, and I apologize, because I haven't read it thoroughly, does the current high school graduation policy address the exemptions that provide for newcomers? And I think it's multilanguage, language students with respect to being able to meet the minimum requirements. Go ahead.
Yes. So the state seal of biliteracy requirements, those actually go into effect January 1. And basically, what it's going to do is it's going to level the playing field for all of our students. It will really affect our students that are, are English learners. And so I can bring that information back. It doesn't live in this board policy, but if you're interested in that, I can bring that back and share that. And we can also maybe put it into a Friday report, whichever you prefer. And then your second question, I'm sorry, please repeat your question.
It has to do with different, essentially different graduation requirements or an exemption to our existing requirements for newcomers. And I think it's also English learners or multilanguage learners, if they meet certain exceptions. And I'm wondering if that's already included in our policy.
Yes. So we do have a waiver process. So our students that are newcomers, they can waive certain requirements. They would be our local requirements. They would still graduate with the state requirements, but we do have our local requirements that can be waived.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other question I have, and it's more for the rest of the board to think about, is whether we need to make all the revisions to the 9124 board policy or board bylaw related to attorney. I'm not, at least in the time I've been on the board, we've never hired an in-house attorney. I won't be advocating to hire one either, but I'm wondering whether that's even necessary. So just something to think about. And I'll, I'll make proposed recommendations for our next item. So I would just request if these can come back as action. And Dr. Boatwright, unless the rest of the board wants the item, a Friday report is fine for me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Boatwright, and thank you, Superintendent Davis. Next information item is, receive information on Resolution 2324-23 Support of Applications for Eligibility Determination. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Okay. This is a resolution which will allow Superintendent Davis and myself, Amerikbal, assigning authorities for applications submitted to a state facility program. So administration is recommending that this item be placed on January 9, 2024 board agenda for action.
Any questions or comments on this item at this time? So we'll return this then back for action. Item number three, receive information regarding district representatives to the Office of Public School Construction, OPSC, and the State Allocation Board, SAB. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Okay, this is approval. We'll authorize Superintendent Davis and myself, Amerikbal, as the district designee to the State Allocation Board and the Office of Public School Construction. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on January 9, 2024 board agenda for action.
It'll return then as consent. Thank you.
President Chan, if there's no objection from the rest of the board, I'd also recommend item two.
Item number two, okay.
Come back as consent.
That's fine. We can move that to consent. Number four, receive information on the 2425 Annual Renewal of Participation in the Super Co-op JPA.
Good evening. I'm here bringing information on the 2024-25 Annual Renewal of Participation in the Super Co-op JPA. Administration is recommending we move forward to the January 9, 2024 board meeting for group. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? And we can return this on consent as well. Thank you. Any advanced planning?
Advanced planning calendar is attached, and we'll keep updating it as new topics come up.
We have additional information and any closing comments. Otherwise, our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 9, at 6:00 PM for closed session, 7:00 PM for public session at the, at the district office. And we'll, we'll recess back to closed session if, if there's any desire to finish up the conversation. If not, then we can return very quickly back.
I have desire to continue.
Is there still desire?
Is there anyone else? I think at least consensus, the question is, do we need to reconvene into closed session to finish the discussion that was being held?
Is there a desire to? Is there a desire to?
I will go with the consensus report. If you guys want to go. Want to go?
Let's, let's do it, then. Let's do it.
I don't think we'll be long.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
Do you need technology here, can they start breaking down?
They could break down.